Good evening, everybody. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of May 23, 2024 to order. And for our Pledge of Allegiance, Dr. Terry Kedover, working with Police Chief Andy Mills, has brought the International Program Do the Right Thing to the Palm Springs area. This program recognizes each month youth in our community who set an example. Students recognized in this program are leading the Pledge of Allegiance at our council meetings. And just as an FYI, last week, the program was awarded the esteemed Community Delinquency Prevention Award by the Riverside County Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Awards Committee. To lead our pledge tonight is Jacob Taylor. Jacob is a fifth grader at Vista del Monte Elementary School. He's a remarkable young citizen, consistently radiates a positive energy. His resourcefulness and enthusiasm in assisting other students are a testament to his impactful presence. Jacob's leadership abilities are not only innate, but also deeply intertwined with his school's core values of respect, safety, and responsibility. His initiative to introduce the new expectation "character before career" underscores his unwavering commitment to personal integrity and ethical behavior. Jacob's self-reliance and empathy are not just abstract qualities. They are evident in his daily interactions with his peers. He consistently puts others before himself, showing compassion and self-discipline. These actions are the hallmarks of a student with outstanding character. Jacob, would you like to come up and lead us?
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and... Oh, I think I missed a line.
That's okay. Continue.
Through the perilous fight or the ramparts we watched were so gladly streaming, and the red rocket's glare gave proof through the night that our flag was still there.
Thank you.
I'm kind of nervous.
That's okay.
I'm missing some lines.
You're doing great. You're doing great.
And the home of the brave.
That's perfect. Would you like to do the pledge? Would you like to do the Pledge of Allegiance too? Okay, let's do the... We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance together.
Like, which one is it? Like, is it the Star Spangled Banner?
You did that already. That was perfect. Now, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance together, okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Jacob. City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call?
Let the record reflect that all members are present, with the exception of Councilmember DeHart. He's with an excuse's absence.
Okay, and now we have the following presentation, Lift to Rise, 2024 to 2026 Action Plan. I know we have some public comment on this presentation, which we'll do immediately following the presentation.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you so much for having us tonight. We're really excited to talk to you about our 2024-2026 action plan. I'm here tonight with my Lift to Rise colleagues, probably too many to name, lots of community partners and community residents. We're here to ask for the council's continued support, participation, and passion to make sure that every resident in the city of Palm Springs has a place to call home. I would first like to start by thanking and acknowledging Mayor Bernstein, who actively participated in this year's planning process, and Councilmembers Garner, Councilmember Middleton, and Councilmember Holstidge, who have been active participants in this work over time. I also want to thank and acknowledge the city of Palm Springs' excellent city staff, Jay Verada, David Newell, Ariel Tulfree-Williams, Flynn Fag, and Chris Hodwin. We're so grateful for the city's excellent staff and collaboration, who continue to partner and collaborate with us to make this work possible. And I will try to go really fast for the first part, but I want to start by setting a little bit of context about what this work is. At Lift to Rise, everybody, sometimes folks refer to us as a housing organization. We care about housing because principally we exist to make sure that there's a future where all Coachella Valley families are healthy, stable, and thriving. And I know everyone here knows that our health, our stability, and our opportunity is fundamentally tied to whether or not we have shelter. There is no people group on planet Earth who is not trying to have shelter. It's the most fundamental form of love and care. Our shared goal together is to reduce rent burden in the Coachella Valley by 30% through the production of 10,000 new units of affordable housing by 2028. And that is a really big goal, and I know a lot of folks have a lot of concerns about how we're going to get there. But I want to first start by just acknowledging our shared wins. We have more than 1,200 units of affordable housing under construction in the Coachella Valley on an annual rate right now, which is up between, what I know you know, between 2010 and 2018, we only produce 38 units of affordable housing a year in the Coachella Valley. Our Catalyst Fund has obligated more than $26 million in loans since 2021 to 11 community-prioritized projects. We currently have $58 million in demand, and we have deployed $12.3 million in the city of Palm Springs alone through the Catalyst Fund. We're also really proud of lots of folks in the audience who are community residents, more than 1,700 community residents, are now actively participating in this work. So our action plan is a roadmap, a path, that's co-created by members of our Housing Can. It's really to draw a two-year sort of line of sight of how we're going to get to that 10-year goal of reducing rent burden by 30%. So our two-year goal is to have at least 7,500 new units of affordable housing completed under construction or within six months away from construction, with an emphasis on units that are connected to early childhood education and improved health equity. So the key strategies, and I'm going to pass over to my colleague Jessica Pollard, our senior policy analyst, to walk through them with you. The key strategies won't be new to any of you. We're focusing on our housing pipeline, funding, infrastructure... We're focusing on our housing pipeline, funding, infrastructure, policy advocacy, movement building, and rapid response.
Thank you, Heather. So our first strategy is our pipeline. As Heather mentioned, by 2026, or July 2026, we want to have at least 7,500 units of affordable housing identified in the pipeline. And we're able to do this by operating our Affordable Housing Pipeline Portal, which allows us to spot-track and frame new units that are under development, in many phases of development throughout the Coachella Valley. And we've noticed that we've got a lot of current units in the pipeline right now in the city of Palm Springs, which we have also been a part of, which leads me to our next strategy, which is our funding. Our focus here is to address the funding bottleneck that occurs when our developers are trying to secure funding for their developments. And one of the ways that we do this is through our We Live Coachella Valley Housing Catalyst Fund, which is a revolving loan fund that allows us to spur the production of affordable housing. In Palm Springs, we've been able, as Heather also mentioned, we've dispersed about $12.3 million over a few different developments, and we've also supported many developments through technical assistance. And those are, that was AlloPalm, Canyons, Vista Sunrise, too, just to name a few. And in California, as we're experiencing a deficit, we know that there are going to be a few cuts to some of the housing funding programs. So our, one of the local solutions we're seeing is to invest into the Catalyst Fund and to just grow that fund so that we can keep up the momentum that we've been seeing with our production in housing. Our focus with policy advocacy is just to move forward the policies that are pro-housing and that's going to reduce the barriers to the supply and to help us reach our goal. And we're really appreciative to the city of Palm Springs. We see you as a model city to champion the policies that are extremely pro-housing with interventions such as your TOT, revenue allocation, inclusionary zoning, and commercial linkage fees, ADUs, and your very own rental assistance, tenant-based rental assistance program that has been successful. Infrastructure is another one of our strategies. Infrastructure is one of the biggest challenges that we're facing in our region to affordable housing, and there are many different areas across the valley that we're seeing stalled due to a lack of affordable, or I'm sorry, a lack of infrastructure to support that affordable housing. And within our, in the creation of our plan, this was mentioned many times by our partners to adjust the bound, or the barriers, excuse me, to getting the affordable housing built. Movement building is another one of our strategies, and as you saw on the screen earlier, we've been able to mobilize almost 1,800 residents in the past two years. And we've done this through interventions such as our Resident Leadership Table and our community committees by cities, where we're encouraging our residents to advocate for themselves and to support the interventions that will help them and their communities. And hopefully, you've been able to see our billboards throughout the valley, on the freeway, and in our city. But we're doing this to raise public awareness and to just increase the support for our mission and our plan. Our rapid response, I'm sure you all are aware, we launched a rental assistance program in partnership with United Way, and we were able to distribute more than $300 million in keeping over 120,000 renters in their homes. And in Palm Springs alone, we were able to disperse more than $10 million in keeping 1,600 residents in their homes. And so we're really pleased to see the city invest in rental assistance and keeping residents home, because rapid responses is really crucial to this plan. And so the city of Palm Springs, you have the power. As I mentioned, you all are doing a great job with pro-housing policies, and we're really excited that you also have a certified housing element. And we're glad to work with the city staff and council members to continue this work. We encourage you to stay involved and keep up the good work that you're doing and work with us. And also, what we're doing is we're going city by city to introduce this plan, and we're asking you all to endorse the plan as we move forward and continue to get, put some people into housing. And you all have the power to ensure a healthy, stable, and thriving community.
Happy to answer any questions, if there's questions.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Holstidge?
Thank you. Just make a comment if I can, and then I think I might have one or two questions. Thank you to Lift to Rise for all the work that you've done in our community and in Palm Springs. We very much appreciate it. We appreciate you featuring resident and community leaders like Dieter Crawford on a billboard in Palm Springs, and we really appreciate his advocacy with you, too, on housing policy. And we have an exciting item on our agenda tonight in building more affordable housing and housing throughout our community. Really grateful, I've had individual briefings with your staff about the data from the rental assistance you did in Palm Springs during the pandemic. We know that helped a lot of residents remain in their homes. I know that the data showed a lot of mothers and young children and single mothers, so we really appreciate the work you're doing for our community. Really excited to support your projects and all that you do. And I think my question is, would you like the city council to formally approve your plan and endorse your plan, so then we'd have to ask for it to come back to a future agenda? I'm happy to do that tonight. I don't know, I don't think I can do it in this agenda item because it's a presentation, but I'll do it at the end of the meeting. So I would love to do that. I think you want formal action, is that correct?
Sure, absolutely. We would appreciate that and also understand if it needs to be on a future agenda.
Thank you. It has to be on a future agenda because of the Brown Act, so I'll request that at the end of the meeting for that to be added to an upcoming agenda, and staff can tell you when that would come forward. And then I'd also like to ask you to consider submitting a proposal to our city. We have recently, thanks to the mayor's leadership, created a TOT set aside for their transit occupancy tax for folks from vacation rentals to go into our housing fund. So we now have a revenue source that goes into a housing fund. We didn't have that before. And so we do have some funding for housing. I know that you have used your loan loss reserve program to fund projects in Palm Springs, right? You've participated in a few of our affordable housing projects and allowed those to go forward with funding. And then the benefit of your program is it goes back into the fund to help other projects, and it's revolving. So I'd love to see a proposal from you to consider us using some of our housing funds to contribute more to your reserve program, which really exponentially increases our impact for affordable housing, not just in Palm Springs, but through the region. So I invite you to do that to our city, and I look forward to requesting your request at the end of the agenda. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Middleton?
I want to reinforce my colleagues' comments and thanks and appreciation for all the work that you've done. Lift to Rise has truly been a leader in our region in making sure that we're taking all of the steps necessary to move forward. So you've done great work, and I know you're just getting started, so thank you.
Thank you.
The question that I have is really a concern, and I'm not looking for a perfect answer this evening by any stretch of the imagination, but when I talk with individuals that are developing market-rate homes, regardless of what price point they're trying to develop those homes, they're bringing them online at substantially less cost than the quote-unquote "affordable housing" projects. Now, I know that's in part due to the different nature of financing and how things are done, but I think we really do need to step back and begin to challenge some of our affordable housing construction friends with the amount of frictional costs that are in their construction budgets, and look for what are some alternative ways to constructing homes. If we're going to be able to meet the kind of ambitious goals that we have, and additionally, every frictional dollar that we can save is another dollar towards building the housing that we need.
Yeah, I'll just address that briefly. It's a concern that we share with you and is a very valid concern. The Catalyst Fund was actually set up to be a catalyst. Our goal was to get to, our goal is to get to $100 million in capital. When we started, Councilmember Holstidge was part of some of these early conversations. Just to be candid, folks thought we were insane at the idea of hoisting $100 million fund and having a 10,000-unit goal. Today, we hold $44 million in capital and a $22 million loan loss reserve. The first three years of going through the state budget process, I think I could speak for myself, had a physical and mental health impact on my body just to be able to get through the process. We were promised resources from the state three years ago, which we maybe, might be, get a little bit of money out of the reed pot. So I just want to speak to how incredibly difficult it is, especially for my affordable housing colleagues in the audience, to actually navigate and find their way to funding, how much money that costs, how stressful it is. And your city staff, our colleagues in the community do a phenomenal job of playing 3D chess and running a marathon to maybe, might be, get some funds. With that being said, the Catalyst Fund is designed, like Councilmember Holstidge explained, to bring the cost of capital down. The idea is that so that folks can then unlock other sources of capital. But to the point that lots of folks are making is we know that there's tremendous cuts in the state budget this year, and they're not just like little cuts, they're huge cuts. Simultaneously, we see inflation, so the cost of nails, wood, the cost of everything is going up, and so that drives up cost. And in order to get a project built, folks have to navigate 10 different municipalities here in the Coachella Valley and different rules and regulations. What's the number-one thing that drives up cost? It's time. So one of the things the city can do, and this is something we work with all cities on, is reducing the barriers for folks to be able to get their projects built. Of course, we should have community meetings so that folks are able to give their input. It's a question, how many community meetings do actually need to happen? There's a lot of rules and regs that we can look at that will speed up time, and that drives down cost because that drives down debt. On the Catalyst Fund, I will say, we're in a different loan market environment. We're making a $15 million loan in the city of Palm Springs next spring. It's a construction loan. We never imagined that we would be making construction loans out of the Catalyst Fund, so we're really grateful for the invitation to submit a proposal. It's really what we need across the Coachella Valley is to look at ways to solve this on our own, because we have to consider every variable to drive down costs. So I don't have a perfect answer, because there isn't one. I will say the challenge with market-rate housing is there's, you don't preserve affordability, and we have to ensure that we're preserving affordability for the residents that live here. Otherwise, we're not actually correcting the market failure that's occurring. So sorry, it's not a really satisfying answer, except that the Catalyst Fund is really worthy of investment, because it's designed to, because the more capital that we have right now, the more developers and the more competition that we get, then that drives up, that drives up getting more developers to build more housing and drives down cost. Sorry for the long answer.
Thank you. I really appreciate that answer.
Thank you.
And thank you for what you're trying to do.
Thank you so much.
Let us know, as always, how we can partner with you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Middleton.
Okay, so, yeah, so I want to echo my colleagues, and especially the last comment, let us know how we can help and how we can support. We do have our housing element in place. We have very aggressive goals over the next four or five years to do quite a bit of affordable and moderate housing, and we're going to need your help and advice on throughout the whole process and everything we can do.
Thank you so much. We're really grateful for your support and participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it was a pleasure going to your meeting, and I look forward to next year's.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to do public comment on the presentation. We'll start with Ginny Weisman, followed by Greg Rodriguez. They'll have two minutes each.
Good evening, Mayor Bernstein, Councilmembers Holstidge, Middleton, and Garner, and the city staff. I'm Ginny Weisman, Executive Director of Pet Ministry PS, which was founded in Palm Springs 15 years ago with over 500 pet adoptions to date, and the founder of New Harmony Affordable Housing for Seniors and Pets, which we are planning to build in Palm Springs. I usually watch the city council meeting online, but I wanted to be here tonight to talk about my experience with Lift to Rise. I call them the wind beneath my wings. I was referred to Lift to Rise four years ago to help guide me through the process of building affordable housing. I launched the idea for New Harmony in June of 2019, when I was asked to speak at a Desert United Networking meeting with 130 people in attendance. The response was so positive, people were already asking me, "How do I get on your waiting list?" I decided to pursue it, but really didn't know where to start. I saw a real need with a shortage of affordable housing, especially for seniors with pets, who also need community around them to help care for their pets in a time of need. I saw all this empty land and thought, "This is a slam dunk," until I found out about tribal land and community zoning, commercial zoning and airport restrictions, and what it takes to qualify for tax credits and state and federal funding. I have been attending the Lift to Rise monthly CAN meetings for several years and have received the guidance, education, and support to pursue my dream. I participated in the action plan workshops and saw the progress that was being made with their bold goal of having 10,000 homes built in the Coachella Valley with over 7,500 already in the pipeline. Lift to Rise's vision made me feel that I could reach my goal. I now have site control for the property on McCarthy Road, adjacent to the navigation center, so I'm officially in the Lift to Rise pipeline five years after starting this project. I want to thank Lift to Rise's staff and the members of the city council and the city staff, who have met with me and encouraged and supported my idea over the years, and thank you to the mayor, who is my fifth mayor on this project, and the council members, who have offered their continued support so New Harmony can become a reality in Palm Springs.
Thank you. The next speaker is Greg Rodriguez, followed by Malcolm Harris.
Good evening, mayor and council and city staff. Greg Rodriguez, I am a resident of Palm Springs, but also Deputy Director for the county's Housing and Workforce Solutions Department. Long day, apologize. I don't need to ask for your support. I know you're all extremely supportive of this project. I'll echo Heather's comments about staff, too, and just the willingness and flexibility that they have has been amazing, not just on the navigation center, but also in the housing world as well. Actually, I came to you today, and it was mentioned by both Jessica and Heather's, about the budget and about the difficulty in financing projects in the Coachella Valley. As you're aware, in the January proposed budget by the governor, there were severe cuts to housing programs and dollars specifically, almost 50% cut. Additionally, too, they were going to eliminate the $500 million in low-income tax credits. Luckily, in the May revise, those were restored. However, as you know, and I think it's important for the public to know, that those are extremely competitive, and because we don't have transit corridors like the West Coast cities or the environmental issues, much like they do as well, although we could argue we do have those, it's very hard, difficult for us to get that funding. What this is, is a very unique opportunity to try a different type of model. And we, as a county, have been involved in this process from the beginning and are a key partner in this, even offering ARPA dollars in funding through Supervisor Perez and the county. And so again, just more educating the public on what this project can do, or not this project, but what this initiative can do to actually create a different type of model. It's well-regarded across the state, as Councilmember Middleton mentioned, as well as the country on the model that it is. And so again, encourage your support, and I would echo my support as a resident for some of those housing dollars to actually be part of that Catalysts Fund. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Malcolm Harris, followed by Julie Hirsch. Malcolm, not here? Okay, the next speaker is Julie Hirsch, followed by Alejandro Mesa Aguilar.
Good evening. My name is Julie Hirsch, and I live in India, but I work in Palm Springs. I work with seniors, the majority of whom are on fixed income, and rising rents and increased rent burden are their number-one stressor. I definitely appreciate the city's support of pro-housing policies, as well as the launch of the Tenant Rental Assistance Program, which we use often. I am here in support of the Lift to Rise 24-26 Action Plan, and I encourage the council to continue their progress toward addressing the affordability crisis, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alejandro Mesa Aguilar. The next speaker is Alejandro Mesa Aguilar, followed by Laquisha.
Good evening, Palm Springs City Council. I'm Alejandro Mesa Aguilar, the Coachella Valley resident, specifically of the city of Coachella, and the Coachella Valley Organizer for the Only Coalition for Immigrant Justice. I'm here to highlight the pressing need for affordable housing in the Coachella Valley. Despite earning a decent salary, finding affordable housing remains challenging. 2,800, while the median household income is roughly 67, $451,000 a year, at this income level, a family could afford to pay $1,686 a month without being rent burdened. When I used to live in Palm Springs back in, from 20, from 2008 to 2013, the rent was slightly more affordable. And this is during a financial crisis, I might add. I understand that inflation and the pandemic have impacted the Coachella Valley and, you know, the nation as well. However, housing costs now take at least a third of a paycheck, pushing out an average full-time worker. The spending power of $70,000 in 2008 is roughly $100,000 in 2024 due to inflation, and this is according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics CPI Inflation Calculator. I'm pleased to say that the Palm, that the city of Palm Springs is doing well in combating the housing crisis through the proactive support of pro-housing policies. However, I hope that this effort continues beyond the city council in collaboration with Lift to Rise. Lift to Rise's action plan, co-created by members of the Housing Collaborative Action Network, include Palm Springs staff and officials in the aims to reduce rent burden by 30% to the production of $100,000, I mean, $10,000 of affordable housing units by 2028. This work would stimulate development and economic growth. Research by the Alliance for Housing Solutions indicates each dollar invested in affordable housing boosts local economies, so, sorry. I'd like to thank the city of Palm Springs and also Lift to Rise as well.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Laquisha. If I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Hello, my name is Laquisha. I am a resident of Palm Springs. I also work in Palm Springs, and I'm here to ask the city council to endorse the action of the Lift to Rise Plan for Affordable Housing. Again, I live here, I work here, it's, the housing here is very expensive, and with the lack of raises in the workforce, it makes it very hard, and you would, lots of people share accommodations because they are unable to afford to live on their own, so I'm just here to ask the council to endorse the action plan of Lift to Rise. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, is there any other public comment on the presentation?
No further commenters on the presentation.
Okay, we'll proceed then. I want to mention a couple of proclamations. The city will issue a proclamation in honor of National Poppy Day, which is tomorrow, May 24th. The red poppy has been designed as a symbol of the sacrifice of lives in all wars, and we ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial flower. And also tomorrow, there will be a proclamation and the 469th Star on the Palm Springs Walk of the Stars tomorrow, May 24th, in honor of Bert Spivak. Bert is the retired president and general partner of the iconic Spa Hotel, and played a pivotal role in shaping the city's identity during its mid-century modern era. And the next item on the, is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for a separate discussion. I would like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or council member would like removed from the consent calendar for a separate discussion and/or vote? Councilmember Garner.
Item 1S. To pull for discussion.
Okay, I'll pull, I'll ask. Councilmember Holstidge? Oh, Councilmember Middleton?
Item 1O is an Oscar.
Okay.
Thank you. I was going to pull item 1O as an Oscar as well, and I'd also like to pull item 1T.
Okay, well, I was going to pull item 1O and 1S, and I have a comment on 1F. Okay, please conduct a roll tall vote. A motion, sorry. We can do it with, she's got it. Along is absent. Okay, at this time, invite City Attorney Jeff Ballinger to provide a report on the closed session.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, the city council met in closed session to discuss the three items that are listed on the agenda, including the one real property negotiation that was added before the meeting. The city council voted 401 with Mayor Pro Tem Dehart absent to affect the employment status of Maintenance Worker 1. Other than that, there was no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that the testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comments for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. If there's a written comment that you wish to distribute to the city council members, please hand it to the city clerk. The first speaker is Dieter Crawford, followed by Laquisha. This is on item 3B.
Good evening, council and staff. My name's Dieter Crawford. I'm a resident of the Desert Highland Gateway Estates neighborhood. Just want to speak on item 3B, the proposed affordable housing in the Desert Highland neighborhood. Affordable housing is a huge need in the city. Residents are having trouble affording homes, and homeownership is unattainable for a lot of our working-class families. The neighborhood that I currently live in is being gentrified very fast. The city's done a great job, though, with affordable housing projects for multifamily, for multifamily units. And I also just want to state my support for the Lift to Rise Action Plan. I want to thank the council for attempting to build a single-family affordable housing in the city. But looking over the staff report, I don't completely agree with the new housing program that's being proposed. It seems to be a path, it doesn't seem to be a path to true homeownership. It sounds more like a single-family, long-term rental. I understand that the land is going to be kept in a land trust to make the homes affordable over a long term, but just want to see families be able to afford homes in the city and be able to build equity and a, and a path to homeownership. These are also manufactured homes. I don't completely agree with that. I understand that this organization is the only group that completed the RFP, but I think that, you know, we could come up with a, a better plan for homeownership and affordability. Like I said, thank you guys, though, for actually taking a step forward in attempting to build single-family housing. I think if we're really serious about building affordable housing, that we should look at some of the other properties in the city, such as the land in Demuth Park, as well as Boulders and Crescendo. Once again, my name's Dieter Crawford. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker is Laquisha.
Hello, again. My name's Laquisha. I was speaking on the vacant properties in the Desert Highland community. As I do agree with the city council trying to do single-family homes, but I was thinking more of something on the lines of the residents in the area being able to maybe purchase the land, to be able to build like a self-help home where, in the end, they will be able to own it. I'm not for sure if I understood it properly, but it was something, you know, as the land being split, building two houses, and in the end of it, it still wouldn't be something that you would own in the end. So I was just looking for something maybe that the residents would be able to purchase and, you know, own as their own. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, is there any other public comment?
No further commenters.
Okay, the next item is consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without items 1O, 1S, and 1T, which will remove for separate discussion. Want to do a comment now or after we do the items? I have a comment on one of the items, too, so we'll do after, after, we'll do item 1O first? And did you want a staff report on that?
Staff report, I had one very small comment I wanted to make. So we have a local preference ordinance that provides a 5% NS. I understand that that's a fixed number that if you qualify, you get 5%.
Correct. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Kim Baker. I'm the Procurement Contracting Director for the city. So you are correct, it is a little bit complicated in that if it is a bid and it's not public works, not a street, it is a straight 5% advantage. If it's a public works project, it's a good faith effort to use local subcontractors. If it is an RFP, a Request for Proposals process, it's five points, which equals 5% of the score. Does that make sense?
Okay. What I'm going to suggest to you is that in some instances, we have individual firms that are barely qualifying for local preference, that they're, as you said, making an attempt. In other instances, we have individuals or firms that have a substantial number of employees that are local, that are Palm Springs residents, are Coachella Valley residents, where the, the headquarters is located in our community as opposed to having the headquarters somewhere else. And without making it too difficult, I would like us to look at some type of sliding scale that awarded points from potentially zero to five based on the level of local hires, the level of local permanent employment, the location of the headquarters. And I'm sure you'll do a much better job than I'm doing here at identifying other factors, but simply because one barely qualifies, they shouldn't get the same score advantage as someone, as a firm that's really truly embedded into Palm Springs.
Got it. So that would take a change to our ordinance, but we are working on our procurement policies now anyway, so we can incorporate that ordinance as well to look at any adjustments that you would like to make.
And I don't know if any of my colleagues agree with me.
Councilmember Holstidge?
Thank you. I was going to pull this item for that exact reason, so I do agree with you. I'd also very much like to see us beef up the local preference. And I agree that there are differences between having a business license in Palm Springs, people might just get as a courtesy, versus actually being embedded in Palm Springs as a policy matter, at least personally, but I think for the council, we're interested also in people who hire locally, who, you know, are providing jobs and benefits and careers and so much more in Palm Springs. You know, that means they're investing their revenue into Palm Springs through their workers. That's why the Community Workforce Agreement, I think, has been so powerful, and I was so impressed by the numbers that we got back about how much local hire we had actually achieved. And so I very much would also support updating our local hire ordinance where, you know, it has some real meeting, meaning and some real impact. So is there a way, are there other best practices to get at local hire for procurement instead of just a local preference? Perhaps you could look at that as well, because I think that is our council's interest as we've discussed, community workforce agreements and local hire.
Yes, there's certainly ways to address it. We'll just have to think through it very carefully, because the thing that we don't want to do is make it so cumbersome that people can't figure out what we're doing or what our rules are. So we'll sit down and look at it. Certainly, I'll work with Jeff, I'll keep the attorney in, in the loop on that, and we'll take a look at it and see what we can do there.
Thank you, because I saw that there are legal limitations. The staff report just says there's legal limitations on how much preference can be given to local bidders based on case law, but it doesn't say what amount that is. And so that would beg the question for council, can we give a higher preference? What are those benefits we can give for people really investing their business revenue back into our community, our workforce, and so forth?
It is a balance, too, just so you know, because you're also, you're, it's a competing interest, right? You're wanting as many bidders as you can possibly get so that you can get really good pricing, but you're also wanting locals to benefit from what happens in the dollars that are used in the city. So you're trying to balance all that out, because what you also don't want to do is make it so advantageous that you drive away competition or businesses that might come here, win a contract, and eventually bring a business here. So we just have to think through it real carefully, but we can certainly look at it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Thank you, I agree, and I don't know if you meant specifically Palm Springs or just Palm Springs? Oh, okay, because I, yeah, I would just say that for me, it's really important that it's the whole Coachella Valley, because we have so many businesses that are throughout the Coachella Valley, and this, and it really benefits all of us. But I, I do see such a huge need. We've talked so much about diversifying our economy in Palm Springs and the Coachella Valley, and this allows us to do this. There's so many times when we've approved, working with a particular company because they're the most, the lowest qualified bidder, and the next qualified, lowest qualified bidder is a Coachella Valley company. And I hate seeing that every time it comes forward, because we know that it's going to be a lot easier for Los Angeles companies, Orange County companies to bid lower. It's not as easy for the people here in Coachella Valley. The costs are a little bit higher for these businesses, but if we continuously start to support them, then that's going to change, it's going to help us with, with really making a bigger impact in our local economy across the valley. So I, I just want to echo that. You have three now, probably a fourth in support of that.
And I do love that you want to keep it valley-wide. We have made so many connections together as a valley now. We have a procurement group that meets on a regular basis, and we're really working in harmony, and we're sharing information. I'm trying to create a database that we can all share, that has all of our local vendors in it, and everybody can access that information. So that's one of the projects I have for this next year to accomplish with that group. And we're starting to train other city staff as well on procurement, because they don't even have procurement departments in some of those cities. So we're really becoming a leader in the valley for the rest of the valley.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, so I was going to pull this as well. So thank you, Kim, for that work on the database, and also for the procurement fair you did earlier this year with 700 attendees and 14 different local agencies. I did ask the city attorney on what it would take to increase that percentage from 5%. I don't know if you want to report out on that or wait?
Yes, and we'll certainly look into these other issues in terms of kind of different levels of, of localness, but courts have generally said that cities and local agencies can provide for local preferences as long as we can articulate a legitimate governmental interest, and for the lawyers on the, the council, it's a rational basis review, so it's kind of a lower level of review. But courts do look at it, and so we need to be prepared to justify why we give a preference in one case or another. So I'll work with Ms. Baker and bring some options back for the council.
Okay, that's terrific. And I think when we just heard before, the, the averaging, median income versus the cost of housing is also, we want to try and raise up our local businesses and, and workers in the valley so they can afford to live in the city in which they work. So we have, we're giving you several direction that we sort of want to, we want to bring this back and, and this back and look at some improvements in our local preference policies. Councilmember Hostage, sure.
Thank you. I just also wanted to add, thank you to the mayor for his leadership and for staff working on supporting local businesses to become city vendors. I think that's really important work. I think the average person, even professional, doesn't know what procurement means. I will say, as a lawyer, it's the most difficult procedure and process for even me to understand as someone who's been on city council seven years and, you know, trained to read this process. I think you have one of the hardest jobs in this city. And I just say that to say there's so much more work we have to do to make our process easy and simple as possible, and then also provide that additional funding and staff support and, you know, procurement fairs, so that we really can invest in local businesses who are often just trying to stay afloat and can't learn these rules to be able to participate. So thank you for your department's work on that, and thank you for the mayor for pushing that. I'd love to see us continue that and grow that work and our leader, as a leader in the region. So thank you.
And just, just one last thing. I know a lot of RFPs go out on Planet Bids and the local newspaper. What is the process for other outlets, social media, other, other news sources? Because if you're on Planet Bids, you already know what you're doing, and the Desert Sun is only one media outlet.
I like that question. You know, we don't do a lot with social media with procurements right now, but that's not to say that we couldn't figure that out and really learn to maybe utilize social media more to get that word out. Sometimes if it's a specialized procurement, we'll put it on specialized publications to reach a broader audience, but certainly looking at other ways that we can make that information available. We can definitely look into that and see if we can find platforms that have better reach.
Yeah, there are some digital newspapers out there. I know for some of the RFPs, we've done on things that are like design work or advertising or printing, you know, there's a lot of local, valleywide local businesses or, that may not be reading the Desert Sun and on Planet Bids, so.
Right. Yes, we can look at that as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we can approve this clarification with the understanding that we are going to come Okay, thank you. The next item is 1S. Who pulled 1S? Councilmember Garner, did you want a staff report on that?
Yeah, I think a short staff report would be good, just so that everyone's on the same page.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the item before you is a request to cancel the project of the roundabout. That would be on South Palm Canyon, Indian Canyon, and Camino Paracela. This is brought forward at the request of city council. Back in April, I believe, there was direction to staff to bring forth an item that would cancel the project. So what you have before you is action on that. In terms of the project itself, we will go ahead and send a notice to our consultant who has been doing the construction documents for the project, to notify them that the cancel, the project is canceled. Also, in terms of the funding for the project, what we would propose to do is make that available for other projects. I do need to clarify one point in the staff report relative to the project funding. The numbers in the staff report include funding that is both programmed and allocated. It involves funding that would be available over several years, which the project would take. However, there is $950,000 that is currently allocated in this year's budget that could be made available for other projects. And so I just wanted to clarify that point on the funding for the project. With that, that concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So this is a project that came before us in January of 2020, and then again in April of 2021. And April of 2021 is when that council, which three of us were on, unanimously approved moving forward with this roundabout project. And now it's being canceled. And so my, my concern here is just to raise, one, that I think it's really important when we're proposing these big projects, that we're having robust discussion, as we did at that April 2021 meeting, and there were, there was disagreement at that April 2021 meeting from the public, but we still moved forward, and largely because we were told that this was the safest option for that intersection, and that their, in a current intersection as it stands is not safe. So my concern is, you know, what do we do now? But then also making sure that as we move forward with projects like this, that we're being very thoughtful, that we're thinking through how these projects are going to impact the community so that we don't have to come back and cancel it. While I understand that sometimes things cancel, sometimes things change for various reasons, I do, we did spend money moving forward this project, not nearly as much as was going to be spent in building it. But what do we do now? And what should the, and if there are other processes that we should be putting in place to make sure that projects are not delayed and we can actually be happy with the results, even if there are some complaints? I know we've had complaints on other projects before as well, and we still move forward with them. So what is that balance? So it's really just to raise awareness of this. I'm not sure if others have comments, but that's, that's my concern.
Councilmember Middleton?
I want to thank my colleague for raising the point. It's an extremely valid one, and this project is an example of something that if we were building from scratch, would have been a, a really positive way to solve a traffic issue. But we're not building from scratch. And one of the things that became very apparent as we interacted with the community was that the dislocation for their businesses was going to be an exceptional burden for them to undertake. And if there's a lesson to be learned in this, it's making sure that we reach out as early as possible to all of the individuals that are potentially going to be impacted. But I think we did exactly the right thing, though, in making the decision to cancel this project, to not move forward, and to listen to our community.
I would like to ask, because we first came up with this project when Indian Canyon went two-way, so it was trying to solve an anticipated safety problem. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And have we experienced, has it been a dangerous accident-prone intersection since 20, whenever that was, 2017?
We have information on accidents there at the intersection from, I believe, 2019 to 2023. I believe the number is there have been eight accidents and one fatality there at that intersection.
And are those ones that we think were caused because there wasn't a roundabout? Or would they, do you have any idea?
I wouldn't necessarily say because there wasn't a roundabout. It's difficult to understand how that might change necessarily. But I will say, the intersection and similar intersections where you have five streets that intersect are always problematic, and you will see the potential for accidents if not appropriately designed.
Okay. So what, what I would suggest is that we continue to monitor this closely, is that if it looks like there is more accident-prone than other five-way ones, that we potentially could look at this again. To Councilmember Middleton's point, it did seem like this was moving forward without a full plan on how to work with those, the business community there, because this could be a multi-year interruption. And I don't think we could actually figure out how to do the roundabout unless we had a whole wayfinding with the whole valley. And, and just in terms of traffic flow, we see how minor things on, not minor, but roadwork on Ramon or in Cathedral City has seriously disrupted the whole, the whole traffic flow within the valley and with neighborhoods, in that we have to look at these things as much larger-scale projects that affect businesses, the residences, and traffic flow outside of that area. So I am in favor of not moving forward on this. However, if there was a compelling reason that it came back, and certainly a safety issue is a main one, and we had a full, robust plan on how to address what we've already heard are questions and problems, then it is something that could potentially come back. And, and we, we had the design work invested, so we could move forward at some point. But for now, I think we should cancel it until we, until we have that compelling reason. Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you. Just if I can ask, so are there different statuses we can choose for the project? So this is a cancellation of the project. So what happens to the work that's been done, the planning work? Would we instead like pause or delay the project for reconsideration and a check-in? Or is this the best course of action to take, hearing where council's at?
Yes, you could take various courses of action relative to the project. I think one of the key things to understand is that there has been work that's been done that we will keep on file. So if council were to ever decide to come back to the project, we would start with the design that we have, obviously work with the adjacent property owners in refining that, and working through some of the situations that you as council members have discussed here this evening. Cancellation means that we will not put any additional funding towards the project, nor will we proceed with any additional work. You could request that we continue to develop construction documents and work with the adjacent property owners and businesses. There's a number of different things you can do, but cancellation, at this point, is kind of the quickest way to, to get to what you want to achieve, with the idea that we can always revisit it at a later point in time.
The project's identified in the five-year capital improvement plan, so what happens with that?
So it would remain in the five-year capital improvement plan currently. When we go to update the five-year capital improvement plan, we would remove it at that point in time, with the understanding that it could come back later and be added again.
When are we reviewing the five-year capital improvement plan?
We'll be doing that at the next budget update, which will be 2025.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yeah, I, I would advocate, we, we cancel this project, we kill it. The file will be there. If a subsequent council decides that we've got an issue that needs to be addressed, all the work that has been done will be there for them to begin with. But if we do some intermediate step, then the question will continue to hang over all of the businesses that are there. Are you going to resurrect this project? And I don't want to give them that kind of uncertainty.
I, I agree with that. We're just keeping an eye on safety. I, I would like to add one other thing, because the last Measure J project that we did not move forward with, we put money set aside for redesigning the downtown amphitheater, and we had $750,000, I think that was set aside, but we haven't yet figured out what that will really cost. So my suggestion was that before we reallocate this money to a whole brand-new project, that we maybe just keep it in reserve until we get the actual budget for that project, in case, you know, if it, if it turns out it's $850,000, or $900,000, or a million, we may want to take some of this towards that and actually move forward with something that's already in the works. I don't know if I can add that on now or not, but just not to reallocate the money right away, but hold it for that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, when we come forward with our, our continuation budget, basically you're asking us to do what we would have already normally done, put the money in reserve with our capital plan until we get further direction from council on, on what you'd like to do with that, so.
Well, I would also like to make sure the Measure J commission is aware that this is in a pocket, additional funds that they should start allocating towards community projects or brand-new things until we determine what happens with that project. And again, I'm not saying we necessarily want to spend it on that project, but before we develop a lot of new projects we haven't completed, let's look at completing one that we already decided we wanted to do.
We'll, we'll certainly report that back to the Measure J commission.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? We need a second. Oh. Councilmember Middleton seconds. Or she, she made the motion, I seconded it. Let's clarify. Okay, so for the record, it was, the motion was made by Councilmember Middleton, I seconded We have three yeses, an abstain, and an absent. The next item is 1T. Our Councilmember Middleton, who pulled it? Councilmember Hostage?
I did. If I could have a staff report, please.
George Floyd mural at 3111 North Indian Canyon has been vandalized, is and is in need of repair. According to the Visual Artists Rights Act, VARA, the artist, Mr. Alec, has certain rights regarding this mural. And the artist has informed the city he would like to be the one to repair the mural. Consequently, the Public Arts Commission is recommending use of public art funds to have Mr. Alec repair the George Floyd mural. And the Public Arts Commission has also recommended use of public art funds to create a high-resolution photograph of the artwork.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this item for two reasons. Thank you for staff and the Arts Commission on the, for their work on this. I know a lot of work has been done, and there have been a lot of community conversations about this mural having been boarded up and having been vandalized, and so I support this project moving forward. I think I just have a larger question about, you know, possibly moving the mural or securing it in a way that it will be able to be, you know, used and enjoyed by the public, if there's city land that we can move it to. I know right now it's on private property, and we've worked with the private owner, and there have been some, or there's just issues with having it be on private property. And so I wanted to ask if staff is working on that. I believe there have been a number of community conversations about that.
Yes, there have been several discussions on that, in particular with the Public Arts Commission on how to continue to preserve the mural. Unfortunately, the mural is about two-thirds on boards that can possibly be removed. The boards are not in the greatest condition, so that may damage the mural further. And one-third is on the building, so that would not be able to be relocated in any way. And this is largely why the Public Arts Commission is recommending a high-resolution digital photograph, so that the mural could possibly be reproduced in full and printed onto large graphic boards and used to be moved around the city at different locations where, where it might be better placed.
So will the mural remain boarded up when this is completed, or will it be opened?
Well, the building is boarded up, and the mural is visible to the public. So when this work is done, the mural will again be in good shape, re-renovated by the actual artist, and will be visible to the public. The concern is if there's any subsequent damage to it, what happens then? And, which is why, again, there's an effort to properly document the mural through high-resolution digital photography.
Thank you. So happy to support this as a first step, and hopefully the Arts Commission can keep working on that and a longer-term solution. Appreciate that it's going to be opened up to the public. And then my second issue is, I think, I thought we had discussed giving the Arts Commission more leeway in allowing items. This is $4,000. I believe that the ordinance currently requires them to bring even $4,000 items to us, which just seems like a lot of use of resources and staff time for a pretty minor amount for the overall budget for the commission and. for the overall budget for the commission and also the city. So do we need to amend the arts ordinance to do that, or is that already in the works?
I believe it's in the works, Mr. City Attorney. Jill's working on the public arts.
Hadn't we discussed giving them more leeway and authority, so we don't have to bring $4,000 or $5,000 amounts to council, because it is within the city manager's authority already? But I believe the ordinance has written, require, your interpretation is the ordinance has written, requires everything to come to council. So is there an ordinance change we need to do, or is that already in the works?
It would require an ordinance change. I know Jill is working on the number of commissioners, but if she's also working on the--
We added that in.
Okay.
If I could just weigh in, there's a number of things in our Public Arts Commission ordinance that we do want to revise. I think it's 30-something years old. And every, everything from the number of commissioners, which I think we are going to do an immediate change, so we can change it for July. But then there's other things for like use of things, whether it could be done for, you know, is an exhibit could be done? Is there other ways to get grants and private donations that could be used for arts projects? So there's a number of things that have come up through the Arts Commission, through former arts commissioners, through the public, on how we could revise the ordinance, so we should do that. I know in the past, there's been some expenses that did not always come to council. I don't know how that happened, but we do want to revise the whole thing, but it certainly seems like $5,000 should not be, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, to the, I'll just mention very briefly, and I know, I don't want to get too far off-topic. This was part of that, I think this was a bit of an unusual situation, too, because the public, it's an important piece of art, but it was on private property. So we wanted to kind of, just kind of take it back through you, I think primarily for that reason. So Councilmember Holstich is exactly correct. We're trying to avoid these smaller amounts coming back to council.
Do we need to amend the ordinance to change the smaller amounts having to come back to council? Is that in the ordinance?
I can address that, Mr. Mayor. The ordinance says expenditure of public arts for acquisition of art, repair and maintenance of art in any amount, requires approval by the city council.
So that's why I believe an amendment to the ordinance is required. And I know former Chair Ann Schaefer had submitted to the council, or individual council members, a whole host of suggestions to improve the ordinance itself, which is, yes, 30 years out of date. So I would support making those changes, or looking at an overall review if we're going to change that.
Yeah. So I think we definitely want to, I know a number of our commission ordinances are decades old and need to be reviewed, so certainly this is one of them. But I did just want to confirm that we're expanding the number of commissioners.
Yes, that I know we are bringing back, I believe, June, the June, first meeting in June.
Okay. Because we're doing the appointments for that commission at some point soon. Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing this up. Okay, motion passes four zero. Councilmember Holstich, do you have a comment on another one? Mine was just on one F, which is the animal shelter shade structure. That was completed, and I just wanted to mention, this was a Measure J community-initiated project from, I think, the last round. And it's a great example of how Measure J funds are going towards helping our local nonprofits and obviously the community with the shade structure. I've seen it, it's, you know, it's very attractive, and I know the shelter staff and board is extremely pleased with it and having that shade for the animals. So I know our community-initiated projects are opening back up this June, so I urge people to look at this as a kind of example for something that could be done, especially for our local nonprofits. That was my only comment on one F.
Thank you. I just also thank you to the mayor for supporting that project. I was on the animal shelter board 2017, 2018, when they were asking for shade structure for that area. So so glad to see that being completed. Also, just wanted to note for the public and everyone paying attention, I'm really excited to see item one Q, the airport mural. I think that's a really exciting project. And also one R, which is the Bristow Playground Shade Structure. I know I've already gotten text messages from parents excited about having a playground with more shade, so needed, especially as we go into summer. So thank you to staff and everyone for your hard work on those projects.
Okay. The next item is item two A, a public hearing on the delinquent waste disposal charges. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be back before you this evening. So we have a relatively straightforward annual process that we'd like to talk through, but an important part of our work to maintain our waste disposal infrastructure here in the city of Palm Springs. So happy to talk through this public hearing item with you this evening. So we're here to talk about delinquent waste disposal charges. So this is an annual process, which is provided for in our municipal code and authorized by California Government Code, by which we collect delinquent charges from anyone who is, you know, behind for more than about a year for residential accounts, and six months or more for commercial accounts. And that collection process involves us moving that funding or those fees over to the property tax roll. So they're then collected through the collection of the property taxes. As of May 1st of this year, about 773 accounts were notified they were delinquent. However, over the past couple of weeks, PSDS has been working diligently with customers to settle those accounts, and we're at about 734 now, and that number continues to decline on a daily basis. We do see this number fairly consistent year over year. Some account holders just kind of prefer to pay their waste bills this way. So we see a lot of names on the list year over year, but then we do get those accounts settled through the property tax process. So we notify customers that they are, that they are delinquent. They both see that on their quarterly bills, but then they also receive a separate public hearing notice and mailing that goes out in like late, like mid to late April every year, and so they receive that in both English and Spanish. And they have until June, December, June 7th, to reach out to PSDS to avoid that lien process. So the phone number is here in giant numbers, but in case anybody's listening, it's 760 327-1351. And PSDS is very customer service-oriented and flexible in working with people to get those bills taken care of, to avoid moving over to the tax roll if there's a different plan for paying that. And that is all I have, but I'm happy to take any questions that the council may have.
I have some questions.
Yes.
Anybody else? All right, I have mine. So they only receive the one delinquency notice?
So they receive the official delinquency notice, but they also see on their quarterly bills if they're past due. And only people who've been delinquent since either July of 2023 for residential, or roughly December 2023 for commercial, are receiving the public hearing notice at this time. So they would have received at least two bills notifying them that their account is past due.
Okay, so on the commercial list, there, I mean, there's a lot of businesses there that are banks and hotels and restaurants that are still in operation, churches. And I just wonder if they're going to the right people. I actually spoke to three of them this week who didn't even know. And I think a couple of them have changed ownership, or, so how, like, so they wouldn't, like, if there was a lien on the property, they wouldn't know? They won't know about this until they get the lien? If it's going to the wrong person?
So a couple different ways that I've seen this play out, and, you know, I don't have the full picture of everything, so this is kind of how I would model that out. So, you know, I mentioned that we had the 773 notices that we mailed out, and now we're down to like 730 and change of people who are still on that list. A number of people who call us every year are sort of those new account managers, or, you know, new owners of a property, or someone who's like, oh, I didn't realize that we were behind on this bill. They get that taken care of. We also, in some cases, have either the property owner receiving the bill, or the, like, the business contact will receive it. Sometimes there's a bit of a disconnect there. We also, in talking to Palm Springs Disposal Services, in terms of the number of commercial accounts which are still on the list, which is about 51 actually of the commercial accounts, they see remarkable consistency in that year over year, which leads us to also think that to a certain extent, some of these property owners may just think this is how the bill gets paid, or prefer to pay it this way. They do, when the account is moved to the property tax roll, both that business contact and the registered property owner will receive a notification at that time, whenever, kind of at June 7th, when we sort of close the list for the year, they'll receive an additional notification. But if there's anyone in particular you'd like us to reach out to, super happy to do that.
Okay.
We'd love to keep this list as small as possible.
Yeah, I know, I mentioned to, just in general in a meeting, and three people came back afterwards who didn't know, so I think there's a couple I'll send it to you.
Okay.
And then the other question I had, because there's one individual who owes like $5,000 at 4690 East Mesquite, which is the Palm Desert disposable, disposal offices? How does that happen?
So that is, that is just kind of an artifact of the billing system. So in talking with our PSDS colleagues, that's a person who manages a number of different accounts at a number of addresses. And so it's just kind of bundled in that list that you have, as kind of, the one address that shows up is that PSDS address. It's just kind of how they program it in the billing system. And apparently that person likes the thrill of the chase and pays right at the last minute every year, so they're familiar with this.
If it is Palm Springs disposal, you know, I can tell them, they better pay their bills.
Yeah, that's fair. They're here tonight if you would like to.
And then, oh, enough. There's people who get like over $10,000. Is that like years of?
So there are a small number of accounts on the list that do have that. I think there's, there's two different potential reasons why that might be. One is that it could be a number of years, and so maybe there was a reason why they weren't moved to the tax roll in the past. In other cases, maybe they really just have a really high amount of waste service, or maybe that's a business that received some violations or some fees for not doing their waste separation properly. So I can look into a specific account if you're curious about it, but, but there's, that's usually how that would probably build up, is maybe they just, they need a lot of service, or we're having issues with the service in some way.
Okay, all right, thank you. Those are my questions. Any other questions? Okay, so this time, I'd like to open a public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. Do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion or additional questions from council? Okay. Okay, motion passes four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is two B, an application by Jane London, represented by the Palm Springs Preservation Foundation for Historic Designation of the M.H. Attician Building, located at 120 West Arenas, case HSPB number 147, APN 513143006. This was a continuance. So we do, do we need the whole staff report again? No, just an update? Is there an update? We were going to have the applicant was going to be here tonight? Okay.
This was an item that was continued on April 25th.
Could you just say who you are?
Yes, so sorry. Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor Protem, and members of city council. For the record, my name is Sarah Yun, Historic Preservation Officer and Associate Planner for the city of Palm Springs. This item, two B, was continued by city council on April 25th to today's hearing. The applicant representative was having technical issues joining the meeting at that time, but Stephen Kealan is here in person to answer any questions. I did prepare a couple slides just to give us a quick reminder of what this project was. Here are some photos of the site as we see it today. This property is a commercial property at the corner of Arenas Road and South Palm Canyon. This building is also known as the M.H. Attician Building, addressed 120 South Arenas, I'm sorry, 120 West Arenas. The applicant's request for the historic designation was evaluated by staff, and at that time, we were unable to make the findings for designation based on the current condition of the site. HSPB evaluated the request and made findings for a Class II designation, and has passed on the recommendation to city council to designate the property as a Class II historic site. At the April hearing, city council had some questions related to future restoration of the site, the review of processes for demolition if the site were not to be designated, and some questions related to the immediate plans for any sort of restoration of historic features by the owners. The owner representative is here today to elaborate on any of those questions. And in your packet, we did provide some answers related to your questions about demolition. If this class, if this property were to not be designated, it would operate as a Class IV site. And any, any plans to request for full demolition would be reviewed by the HSPB as outlined in the Historic Preservation Ordinance. And it would be at that time that recommendations for reclassification would be reviewed. And again, the draft resolution that's in your packet today is based on the HSPB recommendation for Class II designation of the site. And I'm happy to answer any questions related to the staff report that was presented, and the applicant is also available to take any questions.
Questions? Councilmember Middleton?
I think the overriding question when this came the last time is what plans the ownership has, if any, to begin to restore the building to its original architecture, its original status?
We do have Stephen Kealan, who's representing the applicant, who also wrote the report for historic domination. If we can go ahead and call up Stephen Kealan, too.
All right, Steve. Steve, welcome back.
Well, thank you. Thanks for hearing me. Sorry I couldn't make it last month, the Zoom link didn't work. Thank you for hearing this. You know, I think the important thing is that HSPB recommended this as a Class II. And a lot of, I watched the YouTube tape of the, you know, conflict and questions that went around this. You know, there has been a loss of integrity, that's true, but the owner doesn't really have any plans at this point to restore it. But I think why HSPB is recommending it as Class II is important, and I don't think it's really that clear. So it, the staff report agreed that the findings for historic designation would meet criteria for, it embodies the distinctive characteristics of the, no, no, I'm sorry, exemplifies a particular period of national, state, or local history, and also it represents the work of a master builder. So it does meet those, and for a Class I, you also need to show, and I'm reading the city ordinance, 8.05.070. Besides having met at least one of those, it also needs to be evaluated for integrity. But let me read what criteria for designation of Class II historic resources is from the ordinance. A site, structure, building, or object may be designated as a Class II historic resources, resource, provided the site, structure, building, or object exhibits its significance and meets one or more of the criteria listed in subsections C1A above. But here's the important part. A Class II historic resource shall not be required to meet the findings for integrity as described in subsection above. So the integrity is not part of the evaluation for Class II. In the definitions in ordinance 8.05.020, historic merit Class II resource means a site, structure, building, or object not located on tribal trust or allotted trust land that does not qualify for Class I historic resource designation under this chapter, but is otherwise deserving of that official recognition as having historic architectural, archaeological, cultural, or aesthetic significance, and is designated as a Class II historic resource by resolution of the city council. A Class II historic resource may lack aspects, may lack some aspects of historic integrity, or may include a site where the structure, building, or object of historic significance has been lost, damaged, or removed. Class II sites on which the historic resource still exists are eligible for the execution of a Mills Act Historic Property Preservation Agreement as determined by city council. So I think what was missing is the understanding, Class II hasn't really come up before you very often before. And so that is why HSPB is recommending this for Class II.
Either Steve or Arflin, could you remind us again the distinction between Class I and Class II? and Class II in terms of the consequences? Not what the rules are, but what does one achieve by having Class I status that you don't get by Class II?
Terms of the review process for a Class I or Class II site, they both require a certificate of appropriateness for any exterior changes, and they both are eligible to apply for Mills Act contracts. So the processing of the resources are identical.
And they're both receiving the tax benefits?
Correct.
All right.
Or they are eligible to apply for the tax credit. It's not a by right, but they're eligible to apply.
I can't speak for anyone else, but one of the concerns I had, and it wasn't a conclusion, is that if we are not rigorous in the application of a Class II status, do we de-incentivize other businesses, other property owners of properties that we want to see restored from taking the kind of actions that would bring the buildings back to the luster that we all love to see happen in our city?
Well, I think that's the difference between Class I and Class II. Class I has, meets one of the evaluations, whether it's designed by someone significant, or is a prime example of a type of, you know, commercial structure, or custom residence, or tract residence. Class II, it might meet one of those, but it doesn't meet the same level of integrity. So it's not as elevated as a Class I. And Class I is the cream of the crop of these sites. This is a wonderful Cody building that originally was super wonderful, and the owner really respects it. And, you know, it still is recognizable as a Cody. Some of the really important, there was an atrium sort of that on the side that's been filled in. There was redwood siding, horizontal shiplap in 1950. By the '60s, it had deteriorated, so they put T111 over it. And then in the '70s, there was this fire, and Rick Harrison came back, and he's the architect who rehabilitated it. He had worked for Cody, so he respected Cody's vision, but did it with steel, which, you know, will last in the desert.
Thank you. That answers my questions.
Thank you. I have a question. How long has the current owner owned the property?
Did it say in the, I don't, I'm not quite sure.
Have they been maintaining it, or since they've owned it, have they made any changes that took away from the historical?
I think she has bought it in the, pretty much the condition that it's in. And when they do paint or do any kind of maintenance, they're absolutely looking to preserve anything that's original fabric.
Okay. But there's no intention for restoration?
At this point, no. I think a Class II, you might encourage through the Mills Act or something to restore certain character-defining features back, and maybe be reevaluated for Class I, if that's what the owner wants to do. But Class II is something that, you know, we should preserve even the stock of architecture that's not quite Class I level, and not let it, you know, be destroyed even further.
Yeah. I mean, I agree. Now, the Mills Act, the tax rebate, they don't get that unless they are going to restore? Is that?
That's, I think it's an, each Mills Act contract is an individual contract with the preservation officer. And I think they're always, within a Mills Act contract, you need to maintain to a higher level. I think with Class II, it would make sense then, you know, to maybe encourage things like that. I don't know if you can.
The intent for the Mills Act contract is to provide financial aid for historic property owners to restore historic features, as well as maintain the integrity of the historic resource that they have. So when we review Mills Act contracts, we do look at the project list to see what kind of projects qualify as restoration projects, as well as maintenance for the historic resource. And then those will be selected and then brought forward as an item for granting a Mills Act contract.
Okay. And do you want to, I mean, I know you put it in here, so staff does not recommend moving forward with this designation. Is that correct?
Staff, at, staff's evaluation of the project was that due to the integrity of the building that is there currently, the historic findings could not be met in its current state. So if there was some restoration that happened to restore and bring back historic features, then I think that the historic integrity, or historic criteria could be met. Staff's findings indicated that because of the alterations that have occurred, we were unable to make the criteria findings. HSPB were, in their evaluation, made the findings, and they agreed that the integrity findings could not be met. And so that was their reasoning for recommending Class II.
Okay.
So we had differing outcomes, yes.
Okay. I have, it's a public hearing, so I haven't, before I do any discussion, I have one more question. I guess you didn't write the actual nomination?
I did.
Oh, you did?
Mm-hmm.
I don't see your name. It says Tracy. And so I want to know about the necklace.
What do you want to know?
The whole, why did it go for 27 and a half million when they said it wasn't worth anything at the time?
I think, you know, it's been two years since I've written this, so it's hard to remember all the research.
Sorry.
I think in the 70 years since, they probably reevaluated its legitimacy and integrity, so.
It's just a fascinating story.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, is there any other questions? Okay. So this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. Is there any comments?
No commenters.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from the council? Councilmember Middleton?
Yes. I'm inclined to support this as a Class II designation. And Stephen's comments regarding the distinction between Class I and Class II are sufficient for me. I'm, without that, I think I would still be struggling, but I'm willing to support.
Councilmember Holstich?
You're going to go at the same time and say the opposite things. I'm inclined to support staff's assessment for this project.
Okay. So, I mean, I, I do think this is pushing it. I know the building pretty well, and I agree it has features. What I, the reason I, I was not really in support of keeping this, but I do like Steve's argument. And also, I believe it's important to have these structures downtown. I mean, I know it could come back before HSPB. It would have to come back before it's destroyed, but I think that there's less, that it has to be, at least the current condition has to be protected now. Is that correct? If it becomes Class II historic, so there can't be any further?
Any exterior change would be reviewed, yes.
Okay. So I think part of that, you know, is really what is steering me. I would, I would ask the, I hope the HSPB sort of, there's some of these that are so clearly, and we're going to see some more tonight, that so clearly deserving, and this one is really questionable. And I really do not like to be in a situation where HSPB and staff disagree, because I think you both have the same interest, generally, in preserving our historic architecture. But if this will help continue to preserve it, then, and I believe that preservation is key to our brand, that I probably will support this. So, any other comments? It's a tough one, but, okay. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Gardner, did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
Well, my thing is that I just, I agree with Councilmember Holstich, so we're a bit stalemate at the moment.
It will not pass, but, so.
And we would want to bring it back when we have five councilmembers under our rules of procedure.
Okay. So at this point, if we can vote, and assuming we vote the way people said, then it would have to come back again.
I'll just, to give my reasoning, I mean, I do think that we should have, make sure that we're really being rigorous with what we're requiring. And I think it would be very different if the owner were already moving through the process of fixing it up and restoring it. But it seems like we're potentially going down a line of approving anything that comes before us that was built before a certain time, and I don't think that that should be the way that we move forward as a city. And so that's part of my concern. When we, when I would, even just looking through the pictures, I thought, I wouldn't even have recognized that it was the same building personally. I mean, I'm not, obviously, I'm not an architect, I'm not a preservationist. I don't do this work. But I think if the average person can't even really see that it's the same building as the older pictures, I question whether or not it really deserves that status. When the status is based on the architecture, right, it's very different if the status is based on some historic event, et cetera, happening there. So that's where I struggle.
I agree. It's definitely a questionable one. This is not a clear-cut case. And I'm sorry, it will have to come back a third time. Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. Yeah, just to share my reasoning, I, though I might be inclined, in the spirit of governmental efficiency, to maybe vote a different way, I'm trying to recall Councilmember DeHart's position on this, and if he would, which majority he would be in, just to protect our staff, and also the applicant, and the stakeholders. I agree. I think, I think I've also tried to share, I support being incredibly rigorous with these projects. And I think we also want to incentivize restoration. We have such a unique brand in Palm Springs because of the work of so many, like Mr. Kealan, that we want to continue our reputation on our brand, and also incentivize restoration, true restorations, where the normal, average person could identify that it's architecturally significant. So the difference between no status, which is at issue tonight, and then Class II, is that the permit, the request that needs to be reviewed by staff, correct? If there were changes to the facade or the building as defined in our code?
So if it was not designated as a Class II site, it would maintain its Class IV status. In the Historic Preservation Ordinance, as it stands today, requires any major alteration to be reviewed. Typically, those are reviewed at a staff level, but there would be a level of review that would be associated with a Class IV.
So there's already review. Is the review different at Class IV versus Class II?
Yes. The Class IVs technically don't have a historic status. It's just a review of if it is a major alteration or a demolition, then that gets elevated to, that can get, demolition is automatically elevated to HSPB. A major will be reviewed at a staff level. If it's a Class II site, then it has historic status. And so depending on its scope of work, if it is major, it would go before the board. If it's minor, it could be handled at a staff level.
If we wanted to incentivize the owner from, to do more restoration, would designating it now impact that work?
Designating it now gives it the historic status. We can, we have not traditionally conditioned any designations with the requirement for restoration.
Right.
So I don't believe that there would be an incentive to do a restoration. It would already have historic status. The incentive would come if they're applying for a Mills Act contract, and we would look at those contracts to see if restoration is included.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Public hearing is now, oops, do we have a motion? Okay. So it is continued, and again, until Mayor Protem is here. So it does not pass, and does not, it comes back. Okay. If they, yes?
To what extent is possible, but I think all of us would like to, when this does come back, to speed it through and as quickly as we can get to the Mayor Protem's vote and move on.
Yes, yes. I agree. Now, if the owner came back and suddenly had a whole restoration plan within the next, before it comes back, it could change everything. But, okay, we are going to move on. The next item is item 2C, an application by Tom Ellicott and Kevin Palmer, represented by the Palm Springs Preservation Foundation for Historic Designation of the Alva and Teresa Hicks Residence located at 701 North Potencio Road, case HSPB number 155. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes. The next item before you is of a single-family home located at 701 North Potencio Road, HSPB number 155. This project is referred to as the Alva and Teresa Hicks Residence. Request before the, request before you is for historic designation, which was an owner-initiated application. The property is on a lot that is a little over half an acre, with an open space concentrated toward the east side where the front elevation is located. And you can see that in the aerial view here. So according to the Historic Resources Report, the building was constructed in 1926 by Alva Hicks, who then lived in the home for a number of years. Constructed as one of the first spec homes in the Moretto Vista tract for residential development, the origins of the home was quite modest, yet conventional. It utilized a simple Spanish colonial style of architecture, which is more, which was more popular during this time period. It used simple volumes, architectural features, and you can see in the photo on the left, which is provided by the Palm Springs Historical Society, it is of the home in 1927. You can see that it's surround, you can see its surrounding context, and the simple architectural forms of the home. And over the years, of course, homeowners have added to the property, and the report identified the historical period of significance as a span of years. It's from 1926 to 1936. And this would include the additions that were made by Charles Crane. And again, his, the additions that were made by that second owner was deemed within that period of significance, often known as Palm Springs Between the Wars. Since 1936, many more alterations have been made to the home, and one of the more prominent changes is the one we see in that image in 2001, an addition was made to the entry feature, and you can see that impacting the, the visual aesthetics of the front elevation. Of course, in the case of this residence, the existing resource is associated with the life of a historically significant figure locally, Alva and Teresa Hicks. And it is the property that they lived in. The development also exhibits early residential planning in Palm Springs in the 1920s. And of course, the architectural style exemplifies the Spanish colonial revival style of architecture, which was popular during this era. The original site placement, the character-defining features of the home are all part of an early residential tract development, and it closely resembles that original design. And of course, based on the research and the existing conditions of the home, the property does meet criteria on two, three, and five, as you see highlighted on this slide. And when we evaluate the integrity of the site, we do look closely at all seven topics listed here. Integrity is obviously a very important factor, because it can help differentiate factors. It can help differentiate between a Class I or Class II site. The level of integrity also helps clarify the changes on the property, and if they have surpassed the ability to be recognized as a historic property altogether. The original layout of the home remains with the additions being placed in a sensitive location. Important features of the home, however, have had some impact, particularly that front entry, due to the early 2000 addition. While most of the aspects of the integrity are met, this feature of the front elevation compromises the feeling associated with a simple Spanish colonial-style home, which typically shows a modest entry with a porch. And it's due to this alteration that staff ultimately made the finding and determination that the home qualifies as a Class II, not a Class I landmark. that the home qualifies as a Class 2, not a Class 1 landmark. The character-defining features of the home is listed on this slide, but it's also in your draft resolution. It includes features like the U-shaped floor plan, which is still there, the shed roof massing on the north side, which is still there, the site design with its inclusiveness of the mature multi-trunk mesquite tree, which is also there. So again, there are elements of integrity that still are intact. And of course, the non-contributing factors are also listed here and in the draft ordinance to help identify features that were modified. And of course, most of these modifications were made outside of the period of significance. The list does include that front entry and different expansions that were added to the property over time. In summary, the Hicks Residence does meet criteria on 2, 3, and 5 in its current condition, but it does have an unsympathetic alteration on that primary facade, which prevents it from meeting the integrity standards for Class 1. Therefore, staff and HSPB recommend Class 2 designation for this home. And at the time of the HSPB hearing, the applicant accepted this recommendation. And again, Stephen actually was representing the applicant for this project as well, so he's also here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? All right, well, I do have one odd question. How does a mature mesquite tree be contributing factor, like when it could just?
Yeah, oftentimes, we don't like to include landscape features or landscape plantings. In this case, when you're on-site, it's very clear. And in the report, it also identifies the tree being part of the planning of the home. And so the site placement of the house was taking into consideration this tree, and this tree has survived over time. And it is a pretty spectacular tree that's there and being very well taken care of, but it plays a role in the site placement and the site design.
Okay, so when, if the tree were to get sick or die, then does it have to be replaced to match that, or how does that work?
The idea is that something in kind would be replaced and put in place of the tree, something of the same species. Obviously, we wouldn't be, we probably wouldn't be able to replicate what is there now, but that would be the intent, yes.
Okay. I don't have any other, any other questions? Okay. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. Do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers.
Do you want to speak, Stephen?
If you have any questions, I just want to say that the owners are fully in support of this. Speaking of that tree, though, you're going to, I just did a report for the rehabilitation of City Hall landscape, and you'll see that historic trees and things like that, you should, you know, if they're examples from that period, you would landmark those. And the idea would be, as Sarah said, if it dies, replace it with something, the same species or something that, if it's not viable anymore because of pests or drought, then something that is similar in form, leaf texture, color, that sort of thing.
Okay.
So in this case.
I guess because it said it was a mature tree.
Yeah, obviously, if it dies, then you have to put something back that's not going to look as spectacular, but in 100 years, it hopefully will.
Okay. All right, thank you. Then, if there's no other comments, and the public hearing is now closed, is there any discussion or additional questions from council? Okay, well, I have some comments. Stephen, I have, these reports, they're the best histories of Palm Springs for anybody who's interested in reading, you know, I love reading them. It's, I always tell people to read, read the historic site nominations if you want to learn about the history of Palm Springs. So I know Tracy and Barbara and Renee have also worked on it, so they're just terrific, but thank you for that. And I also, I do want to thank the, I've been to this house a few times, the owners are great. They do a lot of charity functions. In fact, I was at a charity function there last year, and Councilmember Garner, then mayor, was in a race running by, in the pride run, and I happened to just be standing outside and see her. So I am fully in support of this one. This one is a Class 2 historic, too, but this one seems a lot, a lot more straightforward than the other one. So, thank you. With that, I'll make a motion unless there's any, Councilmember Middleton, do you have any comments?
I'm just going to second the comments that you've made. I've also had a chance to visit the home in person, thanks to the philanthropy of the owners and the loving nature with which this home has been restored. If the item before us was a difficult choice, this is as easy as it gets. And thank you, Steve, and please extend our thanks to the owners.
Yes, thank you. Okay, passes 4-0. Okay, the next is Item 2D, an application by the Akatia Lodge Owners Association, Oloa, represented by Chattle Inc., for historic district designation of the Akatia Lodge, located at 1111 East Palm Canyon Drive, HSPB Number 154, HD 11. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes. It seems like we're getting a little bit of everything tonight. This HSPB 154 is a request for historic district designation. Akatia Lodge is located at 1111 East Palm Canyon Drive. The property is located on Feland, which means it was referred out to the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer for any recommendations related to the designation, and none was provided. And so we'll go ahead and move forward. This property was condominiumized in 1996, and the complex contains a total of 124 units. There are around 31 buildings on this site, and it is roughly a full city block in size. And the applicant is requesting for historic district designation. As you can see in the aerial map on the slide, the layout of the complex includes single-story bungalows and a two-story configuration of units that face East Palm Canyon Drive. The central focal point of this complex is the open community space, which has a very defined keyhole-shaped pool. The report prepared by Chattle includes a number of historic documents and photographs that reveal how the property was originally designed and occupied. It was constructed as a hotel for, I'm sorry, it was constructed as a hotel in 1958, as you can see in the advertisement. There are an array of amenities that were provided at a daily rate of $30. The sourced photographs show, shown on each, either side of the advertisement on the slide, show what the property looked like during the late 1950s. And here are a few photos of the site today. You'll notice that the sign at the port cocheer has been restored, which was recently completed by the HOA, along with exterior repaint that was done, following a very careful paint analysis to match the original color scheme. And when evaluating the application for historic district designation, one must demonstrate exceptional historical significance by meeting one or more of the following criteria listed here. In the case of Akatia Lodge, the property reflects development of Palm Springs during the post-World War II period. The activity of local developers, meeting the need of single-family housing by developing tracts, and then also providing accommodations for the buyers by building hotels near the vicinity of the tracts, is what we see with Akatia Lodge. The property was also a collaboration of three different masters in the field, namely Kreisel, the Alexanders, and Garrick Ekbo. The collection of the buildings and site as a collective does demonstrate historic significance as a district. And again, the integrity of this site is also evaluated. The seven topics that you see on the slide are evaluated separately and individually. A district is treated like a Class 1 site, so when it comes to reviewing integrity findings, the report and the analysis of this site conclude that all of the integrity findings were met with satisfaction. As a district, the buildings and features that are contributing versus non-contributing must also be identified. The map here shows the contributing structures and features in red, while the non-contributing buildings are shown in blue. The sunshine bar that you see in the image to the right is, was actually constructed outside the period of significance, so it'd be an example of a non-contributing feature. Following the thorough analysis that was provided by the applicant through their report, both staff and HSPB find that the project meets criteria on E, I'm sorry, C, E, and F, along with all of the integrity findings, to qualify for a historic district designation. And that's based on the language of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. HSPB does recommend that City Council adopt Resolution Number 154, Designating Akatia Lodge as a historic district, and that would result in it being numbered Historic District Number 11. With that, I can answer any questions related to the staff report. The applicant representative here is also available to answer any questions as well.
Are there any questions for staff? Nope. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. We do have some speakers here. First speaker is Alvin Newval, followed by Roger Gendron.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. My name is Alvin Newval, and I'm an associate at Chattle Inc. We are the historic preservation consultants that helped prepare this nomination, along with the Akatia Lodge Owners Association. I just wanted to share that this was really, truly a team effort to prepare this nomination, and we were fortunate to work with a great group of property owners that were dedicated and who saw the value and importance of this property and wanted to help preserve its significance for future generations. After a successful and overwhelmingly supportive review by the city's Historic Site Preservation Board, we're just very excited to reach this final step, and we truly appreciate your consideration for this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Roger Gendron, followed by Anthony Vardaro.
Good evening, councilmembers, good evening, city staff. I am an owner at the Akatia Lodge, and it's a really exciting opportunity for us as owners there to steward this historic property forward. The enthusiastic response from the HSPB, coupled with the hard work from Chattle, as well as many of our fellow homeowners, was incredibly enjoyable to participate in. We've been a participant in modernism for the past several years, and the response from those participants has played back to us through their eyes, reflects the joy that we feel in living in such a historic property in the city. So we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anthony Vardaro. That microphone.
Thank you. I'm Anthony Vardaro. I am an owner at the Akatia Lodge. I am also on the board, currently serving as the president. We spoke about the historical significance of the building and such. I wanted to take a moment to speak on behalf of the owners. I wanted to let you know that when we had a vote of ownership, we received 70% of the voting of the owners who voted, voted for historic designation, so we're very much excited about that. We've had an amazing transformation over the past five to 10 years. Almost everyone who's bought at the Akatia has done so because they appreciate the history and the architecture of our place. And it's led to some amazing initiatives, beginning with that particular vote, which was in January of 2022. In 2023, we did extensive research into William Kreisel's original color palette, and then painted the entire complex with those colors. In the 1970s, our original signage was sadly replaced, but in 2024, we replaced that unfortunate signage with a perfect replica of the original sign, complete with the font that William Kreisel hand-drew for us. We also replaced all the exterior sconces with exact replicas that, of the double cone style that was used in 1957. And next up, we'd like to restore the old Candlewood Restaurant space into maybe some kind of community-centric meeting and event space, or something, we don't really know yet. But with historic designation, we can guarantee that our home will forever remain as it is in a beautiful and nearly unaltered state from its grand opening back in 1957. On behalf of the 70% of owners who voted for historic designation, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any public speakers?
No additional speakers.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? Councilmember Garner.
Thank you. I really appreciate those last comments. I think that's exactly what I'm hoping for from projects, is that you, that residents or owners, sorry, I should say, property owners, look at these properties and say, wow, there's so much history here, and we'd love to restore it back. I really appreciate that, so thank you. I'm very supportive of this.
Any other comments? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. And I am extremely supportive of this, and I want to thank the property owners. I'm ready to make a motion to approve. I've had the opportunity, since this is in my district, to be on-site numerous times, almost always because of the hospitality of the Akatia Lodge and the owners there who have made their building and facilities available for neighborhood events and for Modernism Week events. And the script that has now been restored properly actually forms the foundation for the script on the Twin Palms Neighborhood Blade Signs. This is truly an example of one of the great things about the city of Palm Springs and its people.
Yeah, I agree. This is, it's a great, it's a great building. I think the community is terrific in how they're restoring the property and honoring it. I was there at the grand unveiling of the new sign, so it was nice to see all the residents so excited about it. It's great how much it does for modernism and how our tourists come and residents and get to see all our historic architecture. I love the Garrett Ekbo landscape. I know Stephen Kilon mentioned that, that's what City Hall had at one point, and hopefully will have again. And I know we've had three historic designations tonight, but I know you had a big backlog, so the community does appreciate moving forward. I know the Akatia Lodge has been waiting for this, hoping this would come back soon, so I'm very happy to support it as well. Do you have any comments? Okay. Okay, motion passes, four with one absent. Congratulations. The next item is Agenda Item 3A, which is a designation of an alternate for the Riverside County Transportation Commission. May we have a staff report, please? Do I have a staff report? I think that's you, city manager.
I'll do what everybody else is looking. Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I know at the last council meeting, Councilmember Middleton asked for this item to be brought back. Of course, she serves as the appointee to the Riverside County Transportation Commission, but we didn't have an alternate. So I think we are just bringing this back for council to, amongst yourselves, to designate an alternate to fill in for her, should she not be able to serve that function. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any discussion or additional questions from council?
I think I accidentally made a motion. I guess my motion would be that I'll do it.
Okay. I would like to just say something because we've had a comment just in general, and I know that we'll have a new council coming back, but it would seem that some of these, some of these councils, boards, liaisons, it's great to have a rotation, but some of them, there's a real value to having consistency. I would say having Councilmember Middleton on this has been great for the city and for the commission. There's several others on that. I did ask a question at one point to the city manager on the ones that are designated mayor, mayor pro tem. Do they have to be that way or by ordinance, or is that just tradition? In general, you have a whole list on here. You have the Finance Committee, you've got Executive Committee. Can we ask that?
I believe the Finance Committee is established by the city rules of pres-
So a lot of the hospitality and other, that really was an internal decision, I believe, by the council, so I believe we can change it up to city staff to tell us which ones. But I believe it was just a pattern in practice where we thought this should be the mayor or member setting that ourselves.
Okay. I mean, this is not for discussion, really, it's a question for, I guess, when we have a new council. So, okay, do we... Well, we're not, no one's changing positions yet. We're preparing for the sad moment when you're not here. Okay. Then I guess we have... So the motion is that Grace Garner will be the alternate. Councilmember McGovernor, I'm sorry.
Okay. Motion passes 5-0. The next item is Item 3B, which is a joint action by the City Council on behalf of the city and the Housing Successor Agency to approve disposition and development agreement number 23P369 with Neighborhood Partnership Housing Services, Inc. for disposition of real property for development of a homeownership opportunity and approve a joint resolution declaring real property as exempt property, approval of conditional grant agreement for city to provide financial assistance for development of residential housing. And I believe we have, there are two members here. Are they for public comment, or are they just to answer questions?
Presentation.
Okay. They're going to do the presentation. Okay. They want to do the staff report, then? They'll do it?
Yeah. So, hello, everyone. For the record, my name is Ariel Tolfree-Williams, and I am the Housing Services Administrator for the Housing and Community Development Department. And I am just going to hand it off to our developers. We have NPHS here to discuss what we're going to be doing, as well as a consultant on the line to talk about the Community Land Trust.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members and city staff. My name is Clemente Arturo Mojica, and with me today is Jesse Ivar, Chief Business Officer. We are very excited. We are the developer that's proposing to create six single-family homes that will not only create equity and generational wealth for low-income first-time homebuyers, but will also utilize a Community Land Trust model that will keep these homes affordable for multiple generations of homeowners without any additional subsidy from the city. So it's a great model of creating homeownership. Not only do the owners build equity and generational wealth, the city increases their affordable housing stock in homeownership, and they're protected and preserved for 99 years. So we're looking forward to this presentation, tell you more about this incredible project. We believe it's very, very impactful. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Jesse Ivar, and we do have our consultant, Dev, somewhere, somewhere over there. Yeah.
She's online somewhere.
She's online somewhere. So Jesse?
Thank you. Again, thank you very much for your time, Mayor, council members, and special thank you to staff, Jay, Ariel.
You need to speak in the microphone. Sorry.
Very sorry about that. Jesse Ivar, Chief Business Officer, NPHS. What I was saying was thank you very much, Mayor and council members, for the time, and special thank you to Jay and Ariel for your wonderful work. They have been extremely responsive, very helpful with this project throughout. I'd like to direct your attention to the presentation. It looks like I do have what I needed. I'd like to start off by telling you a little bit about who we are, because we feel when we do projects, this relationship goes well beyond just one project, but rather, we are looking at this as a partnership. NPHS stands for Neighborhood Partnership Housing Services. We're a nonprofit organization, and our focus is on affordable homeownership and preservation. And so we do that through a few different ways. Our three main areas of impact include our socioeconomic work, which revolves around our HUD counseling. So our economic inclusion work is, looks like, you know, not foreclosure prevention, but financial education. We have our homeownership development, which revolves around our homebuyer education, capacity building. Our homeownership preservation is our reverse mortgage counseling and foreclosure prevention counseling and financial wealth building. So that is sort of our socioeconomic work that helps people, for us, get on the path to homeownership and includes them in the space. And as a CDFI lender, we are a community development financial institution, and so we're able to attract dollars, and we try to help folks, again, bridge that gap that they're seeing in the marketplace. So a lot of what we do is down payment assistance programs. We work with municipalities throughout, you know, San Bernardino, Riverside, and East Los Angeles counties to help them administer home rehabilitation programs, weatherization programs, and more. And so we also have financing available. We've created our own ADU financing mechanisms and debt facility for our CDFI, which we created to bring investments from banks that are looking for CRA credit and back into a product that is achievable, you know, accessible to low-income households or those residing in low-income census tracts. And we also do small business lending. And then we're here today to talk about a lot of our community development work. So we're not just a regular community developer looking for, you know, very dense projects. And I say that regular because that's what's become the theme. What we do is scattered site infill development, which is why we were probably the only applicants during this RFP. It's very difficult to do. You've heard, I've heard, you know, Councilmember Middleton talk about bringing down costs. We've heard other folks, you know, why is there not enough? You know, we see a lot of the multifamily spaces, why is there not enough single-family homes that are being built that are affordable? And that is because it is very difficult, very expensive to do. And so we've looked at alternative ways to, you know, to do this work that does bring that affordability component. We've actually launched a social enterprise to become a manufactured housing dealer to help other nonprofits and small developers also achieve affordable homeownership development. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about that. And preserving this affordability is important to us, so we also utilize the Community Land Trust model to achieve that. We embarked on this journey trying to figure out how to better do our work years ago. I mean, we're talking right after the foreclosure crisis. We were already seeing, you know, difficulty in producing units that, you know, were accessible to low-income households and moderate-income households, folks that are everyday workforce or everyday folks who live in our communities. Personally, friends, family have struggled with this, and this was a very important thing for me to take on. The organization looked at, how do we do this? How do we, how do we go about creating not just additional homeownership, but how do we do this more affordably in construction? So we actually started with a modular product. We partnered with the City of Chino Hills, and we built three modular homes. Now, although the project was successful, we didn't really see the cost savings we were expecting. Most of the cost savings really came from the time that it took to develop the property. So our journey continued. And then you can see these two properties that we built here, they're among several. I think we had seven of these types of properties that were built to HUD code. So this is federal code, and, you know, they look great, they work, they function great, high-quality, but just, and we saw lots of cost savings, we saw over 30% cost savings, but just, people, they still had the stigma of what you heard earlier. We don't want manufactured homes. What are they built out of, right? Now what we're using is this last product that you see here, what you see under Gateway Demonstration Project, this is our last project we just completed in December. And as you can see, this looks a lot different than these other two. And this was called an MH Advantage, otherwise known as a cross-modular product. So it's above HUD code, right? So it has more aesthetic-conforming features, like from grade to the bottom floor joists is only 30 inches, so it doesn't look like it's all raised. These are on low-profile block wall foundations, so they sit as if they're on a slab, right? So, you know, they're not elevated, they don't look like a modular or a mobile home or even your grandmother's, you know, manufactured home, I think is what folks think of when they think of these. These are built with every material that you would use in an onsite construction, same exact materials. The only difference is they're built in a factory. And so there's cost controls, and that helps us as well with construction management and also helps our low-income families that are looking to build accessory dwelling units utilizing these types of products as well. So this is what you're getting. These are the interiors of these. Again, these do not look like your typical affordable housing. I mean, to me, we did not want to sacrifice quality, we did not want to sacrifice aesthetics, and, but we did want to bring down the cost of construction. This particular project had a single-family, three-bedroom, two-bath, around 1,500 square feet, and an 800-square-foot, two-bedroom, two-bath ADU. And this will be placed on a Community Land Trust as well, but hasn't just yet. We just completed the project, and we're actually renting it out and doing some information gathering before we do that. But I really wanted to showcase this, and I hope, the gentleman who was here earlier, I did give him my card, but I hope he's on so he can take a look at this and come even see them in person, because these are available to see in person as well. We try to go even a step above and beyond every construction, so we're always adding to each development a little more. And so these are some of the things that we do. We're trying to build homes that rise to meet the wellness of families. So we're including, you know, integrating energy efficiency, healthy features, and climate now resilience into these constructions to enhance, obviously, the family wellness. So eco-friendly construction, again, these are being built in a factory in a controlled environment. There's little waste that goes into these. These are high-energy efficient, and they're also sealed much better than your home built onsite as well. These all, not only, originally, we had them solar-ready, and then we started adding solar. Now we're delivering them with solar and battery storage. So they're coming, you know, essentially zero-energy-ready. They're EV-ready. We have indoor quality monitors that we install. And we also have been working with this group called IBHS. IBHS stands for the Insurance Institute for Business and Home Safety. And they get commissioned by insurance companies to test various natural disaster, materials against natural disasters, so hurricanes, wildfires, et cetera. They're known for their Fortified product, which you may or may not be familiar with, but they're high-wind-resilient roofing materials. And so folks who have these types of materials on their roof actually get discounts on their premium. So we just started working together here in California, looking at what do we need here? So outside of the Fortified, they came up with this wildfire preparedness designation. And so we've included on our previous models what's called the WUI package, which is the wildlife urban interface, and that includes things like fire sprinklers, we have non-combustible materials on the exterior cladding and other, you know, sort of fire safety features, but this takes it a step above that. And so this designation is brand-new. We don't know yet what it'll look like in terms of discounts on insurance, but we do know that it will, if there's any issue with insurability, this would take care of that. And we're designating these not just to the base, but to the plus. And I'll show you some of these features here. So this is our Highland Haven model, and we're really pushing design here to the next level. Again, we didn't want to just bring a box over to the city of Palm Springs, knowing your rich history of architecture. So we really attempted to do what we could to really give it a mid-century look. And we hope, I think we've achieved that. I think this, these look wonderful. Don't, the colors aren't going to be the exact colors, obviously, but I think this really showcases, you know, the innovation in what we're utilizing now with these types of MH Advantage homes. And again, one more thing about the MH Advantage homes that I forgot to mention, why they're so important, is they open up financing to the borrowers. There is what's called a duty to serve, which all GSEs, which are government-sponsored entities like Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae must abide by, that require that they lend on these homes to any borrower who's interested in buying. And on top of that, it regulates appraisal industry to use onsite stick-built homes as comparables. So they appraise just like any other home, and they get financing just like any other home. They're tied to permanent foundations, utilities, just like any other home. Again, the only difference is instead of being built onsite, they're being built in a factory, which is a lot more efficient. And so this model here, we plan to use, and I'm going to skip back and forth real quick, but we're going to use on two different sites, one on Eldorado, and then the other one on Rosa Parks. And I'll back up a little bit. Trying to go backwards, but it's going forward. Hold on. Sorry about that. Here we go. All right. So this model is a three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage. These are really just over 400 square feet, they're about 21 by 21. The garages are the only thing that, structures that are built onsite. Other than the site improvements, everything else is done in the factory. Again, these will include solar panels with battery storage, they'll include the WUI Plus package. The dual-tempered glass is important for us to be able to meet that PLUS designation on the wildfire preparedness. That's why we included that as well. These are Energy Star rated, all electric appliances are included on all of these homes. They're water-resistant plank flooring installed, granite countertops, which is an upgrade that we choose to do, and again, the wildfire prepared designation. Oh, now I'm going backwards. So I'm sure you're familiar with these two sites. What we plan to do to maximize density is we plan to utilize SB9 lots and lot-split these, to not just have one home per lot, but actually get two homes from each lot. And I know that was important to the community. I think there's, it sounds like there's a major need for additional housing, and fortunately, the lots were large enough for us to be able to accommodate a minimum of two units. Now, the only lot that we did need to choose a different type of model, which we call the Elevate Via, is the one on Tramview, because it is a very small lot, it's just over 6,000 square feet. And so we had to go with a 1,200-square-foot model. This still features three bedrooms, two baths. Now, two-car garage may or may not be a truth yet. We're still working with planning on seeing if we can fit the two-car garage. If not, it'll be a one-car garage, but we're aiming for the two-car garage. Same thing, it's going to include all the same features as the other model, and we're very excited, you know, to be able to offer these in the community. We've been around the area, we've seen what it looks like. We think these are going to be a really great addition to the neighborhood. And, you know, we feel that low-income and moderate-income folks who live and work in the city don't have these opportunities very often. We want to ensure that they have this and then some. We'd love to, again, be a long-term partner with the city. We'd love to explore other development options if this goes well, which I believe it will, and otherwise I wouldn't be here. And, you know, one of the ways that we're going to keep this affordable, so it's not just about getting people in, this is what a lot of people run into, is, okay, we got a low-income household in, but how do you preserve that affordability, and how do you preserve it long-term? And we've visited a lot of different models, the same type of exploratory journey that we've taken with our approach to development. We've done so on subsidy as being a CDFI lender. And so we've done, you know, from deed restrictions, covenants, and what we have found is the Community Land Trust, and I, and this is important because I've worked with cities, city attorneys specifically, who've had to come after developers while after the fact the property was already sold. And now they're chasing the truck, trying to preserve this affordability, meaning there was no steward who was monitoring these transfers. And so what that Community Land Trust does that I feel is so important, is that it allows for us to monitor these properties, and it still allows for folks to build equity. Now, I want to stop here and go ahead and hand it over to Dev, because Dev is our consultant, our CLT consultant, and she's going to dive in a little deeper on the CLT model, what it looks like, how we back up into these prices, how much equity folks would be able to gain on these, and then some, and then I'll come back and answer any questions if you have any. Dev, if you're on?
Good evening. Yes. And Jesse, could you forward the slides for me, since I'm remote?
I am here, ready for...
Okay, great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. It is truly a pleasure to be here with you. I would come on camera, but I am not being allowed access to that, so here's my voice. I've served as executive director for 21 years, as a founder of the Community Land Trust in Sonoma County, and also founded the National Community Land Trust and the International Community Land Trust. It is something that goes on around the world, and we all want to increase the supply of housing. The focus here, and that NPHS is doing so well, is housing our workforce. It's all about the paycheck. The indexes that are out there don't really matter when it comes to housing people who are priced out in their own community where they work. So we need to focus on what they can afford on that paycheck. So the price of the home is tied to the income, so it remains affordable in perpetuity. As you can see, all land trust homes float. There is a separation from the home and the land. The home is owned by the owner, and the land is set aside as a community asset, with the homes that sit on it set aside for the workforce in perpetuity. We know that the city has its housing goals to meet, and we know that the capacity needed can be something that can benefit from a local nonprofit, and in this case, NPHS. So NPHS understands what your criteria... who are priced out in their own community where they work. So we need to focus on what they can afford on that paycheck. So the price of the home is tied to the income, so it remains affordable in perpetuity. As you can see, all land trust homes float. There is a separation from the home and the land. The home is owned by the owner and the land is set aside as a community asset, with the homes that sit on it set aside for the workforce in perpetuity. We know that the city has its housing goals to meet. And we know that the capacity needed can be something that can benefit from a local nonprofit, and in this case, NPHS. So NPHS understands what your criteria for housing are, understands what your housing goals are. And our job here is to implement those and to deliver those to you and to be in a partnership so that together we are not only creating these homeownership opportunities, but we're also being the steward of both land, families, and to you. As you can see in this map, NPHS has over 12,000 homeowners that they have created since 1991. So the experience box is definitely checked. So the process for partners is generally the developer approaches a city with a project. The city and the developer discuss the Community Land Trust model. That's what CLT stands for. And discuss workforce workforce units. We work out the outline of the project. And then what we bring to the table are the regulatory agreements because this model has already existed. In Sonoma County, we've done 183 Community Land Trust homes with every city up and down the 101 corridor throughout the county. And so there is no need to reinvent the wheel, if you will. And so we have shared agreements with the city attorney and the staff, who have been, by the way, absolutely phenomenal, as you've heard all night long. So we put in an application. We all go through the entitlement process and seek project approval. And then we qualify the buyers where the homes are being built. The city deems the land to the nonprofit. And the developer, in this case, NPHS, builds the home and the workforce units. And then we meet at the close of escrow with our qualified buyer. So how does it work? So at the close of escrow, all at the same time, this occurs. Now, in this case, we can have One Piece start off a little bit sooner, which is the city deeding the land to the land trust so that the land trust can hold it as a community benefit. Just if you think of open space and how land is set aside forever and you know that you can go for a hike, you know, with 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 your current generation, your children, your grandchildren, it is the same thing. The land trust is going to hold that land in perpetuity. It is off the speculative market and it serves one purpose only. When those homes are built, the land trust is going to lease the land to the family. And that lease is a 99-year renewable ground lease. Now, you can't say forever in legal terms. You can't use that word, but you can say 99 years renewable. So the family has that home and exclusive rights to the property, exactly like ownership. What we ask our families to do is to agree to sell to the same income level that they were in when they first got the home and sell it to someone in that income level whenever they're ready to move. And there is no time limit on how long you need to live there. You can sell your house the next day or never. And the goal is to participate together to always keep the home affordable in perpetuity for generations. The developer sells the house to the family, just like you would in a market rate home. We make sure that there is a 30-year fixed mortgage. There are no seconds, thirds, fourths, fifths. It is a conventional 30-year fixed mortgage for them MH Advantage Homes, thanks to the work that Freddie and Fannie have done as well on duty-to-serv, as Jesse mentioned. So what does it take to qualify for a home? It's very, very much the same as qualifying for any home. You have to qualify for the mortgage. There's a simple application that's submitted by anybody interested in the home. And what we are really looking for is to meet the ratios and the criterias that the city has set out. So when someone puts in an application, we want to make sure that they're not spending more than about a third of their total gross income on all of their housing costs. And that's not just the price of the house. That is, as you would think, in an open market. Price of the house is based on the principal, the interest, the taxes. And the taxes are based on the price that someone paid for the affordable home, not the not the appraised market value and hazard insurance, all the things you need to actually own a house. All of those add up to about a third. And we want to see no more than the total debt, including housing, to be more than 43% of someone's paycheck. You can choose to decide if you want to have a preference, which I believe that we've had this discussion, that preferences, all things being equal in an application, will go to people who live or work in the city of Palm Springs. Also, the homes generally do not require a down payment because there's an 80/20 loan to value and that can really be helpful to people who are waiting to get into the market and have a down payment as barrier. How do we keep the homes affordable for subsequent buyers? So the price of the home, as we mentioned, is tied to the paycheck, not the market. And the index is Area Median Income, AMI. This is a chart that comes out every year from the state of California through HCD. To keep the homes affordable to future buyers, homeowners agree, they're going to sell their home for a limited price whenever they decide to move. The maximum sales price is calculated based on what was paid initially, plus an annual increase based on the change in area median income. For example, calculating the resup price. Price, if the initial income in 2013 for a family of four at 80% AMI, which is a low-income household, was $50,950. 10 years later, that same family in 2023 is now earning $74,550. So the change from 2013 to 2023 is 32%. The AMI comes out annually. The change could be more or less depending on how incomes have risen. So if the initial purchase price in 2013 was $200,000 and if, as we saw, the change in median income is 32%, then the most that family could sell the home for 10 years later is $264,000. The total appreciation is $64,000 because that is the same as 32% of 200. So the price of the home hinges the the wallet of the initial family as much as it does the next family. But because incomes have gone up, the next family can afford it just the same. Now, total equity is a number of things. It's the appreciation, in this case, $64,000, plus debt reduction because our families have not been writing a check, flying it into a paper airplane and out the window called rent. Because they've been paying down that principal, they keep the difference. We do 100% financing with zero down. So if they borrow 200,000, they're not going to owe the bank 200,000. So the balance is added to what they walk away with, plus a down payment, which is not required. Certainly, if you would like to do that, you have the option to do that. So stewardship, this is a key word in the community land trust model. It is not enough to qualify someone, give them the keys, and then walk away. First-time homeowners have the community land trust in their corner. We check in on our families every single month. There are ongoing pieces of support, counseling, advice, linkages throughout the time that they own their home during the great foreclosures, you can see in this chart. The land trust that we have as an example here, which is Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County, had zero foreclosures during that time. Plenty of people were worried and called, but we were able to sit down and counsel them through this and explain what being underwater is and this and that. Meanwhile, the rate of foreclosures throughout the national United States was 1/8 for community land trusts as compared to what was going on with the rest of the market. And that is due to stewardship. So we know also that this model works in a cold market and a hot market and that stewardship keeps people protected. Ask a land trust not how many homes we have, but how many families we've served. So in the case of Sonoma County, we have 149 homes, but it has 183 families. And that's because we want to be able to have that investment work over and over again. So for example, in this proven working model, one-time community investment serves to keep the home affordable, as affordable to subsequent buyers as it was to the initial buyer. So for example, this house in 2005 served the first family and the four subsequent buyers had the same affordability as the initial buyer. But those dollars, that sweat, that love, all of it that we're all doing now, putting in to create these homes, was preserved and stewarded through the CLT. And thus, every new investment actually went to increasing the supply of housing for new homes. So a question that comes up often is, is there wealth building in CLT homes? So we've had 33 resales and you can see here that there has been wealth building. To summarize, we've had, when this chart was made, 32 homes. We have done 33 and we have two more in contract. By the end of this month, it'll be 35 homes. Our homeowners have, on average, sold their homes for $50,000 more than what they bought it for. This is good for the entity selling and this is good for our new buyers coming in, 50,000. However, upon selling their home, our homeowners have walked away with an average of 100,000 in total equity, which is often used to purchase a market-rate home in the same community. So you can house your teachers, your medical personnel, your first responders, your local employees, and keep people here and you have the land trust home be a stepping stone between renting and owning, recruit and retain our workforce. That's what this is, a tool to be able to do that as well and not lose people in our community. And then they can build that equity and buy a market-rate home in the same community. So why does subsidy retention matter, holding on to that investment? We're protecting the public investment that you're now making. We're eliminating the need for government and private subsidies in future years as the units are resold. We're tying the subsidy to the unit, not the family. All the investment goes into the home and land. We're maintaining income-targeted workforce housing stock. We're building up not going by this. And we're creating a community wealth opportunity and personal wealth opportunity while we're maintaining future affordability. What are we accomplishing? We're partnering with a nonprofit, city council members. You're partnering with a nonprofit to steward a finite resource that is land that serves as a permanent subsidy to generation after generation of affordable homeownership. You're making homeownership a reality for the workforce in our community. We're delivering stewardship to families to ensure successful homeownership. There's someone in their corner. We're creating community wealth by preserving land that will benefit the community in perpetuity. And we are strengthening the fabric of our community by providing our workforce a secure place to live. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Dev. Council members, mayor, any questions?
Okay, is there any discussion or questions from council?
Well, first a comment. I think this is a really exciting project and I'm looking forward to seeing us bring it in. It's six homes that are desperately needed. And the concept here is is not new in many locations, but it's new here to Palm Springs. And so I'm anxious to see how we test it out and how well it works here. I'm looking at page five and if I'm correct, we've got a total budget on all of these homes of $3.8 million.
Correct.
My simple math tells me that's coming out to about $638,000 per home.
It's it's a little less than that, actually. You know, each home itself, it's about 180,000. What most of that money goes into are the improvements to the to the ground that are needed.
Define what you mean by improvements.
All of the, you know, infrastructure that's needed to get it there for the installation, utilities, the foundation, et cetera.
If we were building a market-rate home, we would have that same amount of cost that would be going in.
Correct. Plus, it would cost even more with the with the onsite stick built. So we're bringing down quite a bit.
I'm very supportive. I'm still still struggling that we need to find ways to bring these products online. It's significantly less money.
And I want to say one other thing. I didn't mean to cut you off, but I just want to say it would this, the land trust model would be the first in Riverside County. I don't think there's been any land trust. We've talked to the county assessor's office already, you know, ahead of this to make sure that we're getting the discounts for the clients who would purchase these. And they said, you were the first one so far. But we're the we're still on the journey, so you know, council member Middleton. And we're going to continue on until we figure it out.
And one last comment is this is a different model. And in introducing it to the public, it's certainly, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. There's a lot of education that's involved in this. And for so many individuals who feel that they're not getting that fair shot at full homeownership, there's definitely going to be some work in making sure they understand the advantages of this of this type of program. And I'll defer to you how to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Holst, arguing who doesn't go first. Councilmember Holst.
Thank you. I like to defer to the council member when it's their district. So I just offered that to Councilmember Garner. Thank you so much for the presentation. Very much appreciate it. Thank you for staff for bringing this forward. I think I first spoke to Dieter Crawford about this issue. He gave me a tour of his community and raised the issue of vacant lots and sort of the promise that the city would do infill development, which it looks to me is like 20 years to date that the city had bought these par, some of these parcels. And so in first in 2017, I asked city staff at Mr. Crawford's request to bring a proposal forward on this. So we've been talking about this. I see Jay Verata for many, many years. And I appreciate councilmember Garner has also raised this issue of these lots. And so I'm excited to see us bring this forward. And thank you to your organization for responding to the request for a proposal. I really appreciate it. I'm supportive of the community land trust model. We've talked about it as a council. And I appreciate this this model to, you know, ensure housing for our community and affordable housing. I just do have some questions that were raised by the community. And so, one, can you explain like the involvement of the community? I know that you're just now responding to our request and this is a proposal for us to then approve a development agreement with your organization to then move forward. So do you have a plan for community engagement? We have a very involved community, a lot of community leaders. And this might be questions to staff as well. I know you remained at the mic, but some of my question will be for other other staff as well. So could you just detail your organization's like view on the community and community relationships and what that might look like since you are sort of coming into an integrated community neighborhood organization?
Absolutely. And I guess we'll maybe tag team a little bit because she came up here. But we've been working in the community for the last several months on our home rehabilitation. So we've actually already been working in the city. We plan to do outreach. As a matter of fact, the gentleman who commented earlier invited us to go speak with his association, which we plan on doing. What we typically do is, you know, mass advertisement for, you know, community engagement. And we we want to hear all that. It's very note taken from Ms. Milton. These are very complicated type of transactions that folks aren't aware of. And especially, we have not only education on the CLT model, but the manufactured homes. Folks still think that these are mobile homes and they don't see what they are today. So we understand that we have a lot of work to do and we plan on getting out there and, you know, hitting the hitting the ground running.
So you'll attend neighborhood meetings?
We have not yet, but we plan to, yes. We were trying to get this approved first so that we can begin that process and say, this is, you know, get started getting community input on, you know, this is, you know, start getting community input on, you know, again, what the color's going to look like. First, we need to do the education, then start kind of, what do you guys want to see here? And so we have a lot of options in terms of model types. And so if we know that, hey, you know, maybe this isn't working, we can change some design. But I think for us, I don't know that the design's going to be an issue. I really feel like they're going to, you know, folks are going to accept it. Again, we did a lot of research going into this beforehand. I've personally romanticized the city of Pasadena for many years because of your rich historic history with movie stars and architecture and all of it. I'm sorry, Palm Springs, what did I say? Pasadena.
Also a beautiful city.
I have not worked in Pasadena in quite a while, but sorry about that.
That's okay. It's late. We haven't, it's been a long night already.
But, you know, what I feel we're going to spend a lot of time on is, again, the education piece. And so one of the things we've been doing, again, is already outreach via our home rehabilitation work. We want to really get in front of it with our counselors. Again, we're HUD certified counseling agency and that's typically the first entry that folks see us. And so hosting workshops, hopefully in partnership with the city as well as a facilitator to help us get the word out and also get folks to show up is going to be important for us to be successful. I don't know.
And I just wanted to add that I've been in contact with Jarvis at the James O. Jesse, was it James O. Jesse Highland? There you go. I know, I'm like everyone, we all have such long titles for everything. So I've been in touch with Jarvis there to go to some of the neighborhood meetings, talking to Denise who's running One PS. So we can really get in front of folks and spoke to them and we spoke to Dieter a little bit in the back after he gave his comment about coming into neighborhood meetings outside of One PS so we can give the presentation to them so they can ask very specific questions that we can walk them through and make sure they're really clear. So we've exchanged information and we are ready to take that step. We also want to do, like you said, the counseling and making sure that all residents have the opportunity, not just those that are in that neighborhood, because it won't just be folks presumably from that neighborhood moving to that neighborhood. So we want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to learn about homeownership opportunities and how that can become a possibility for them, because we do hope to expand this program in other parts of the city.
Thank you. So yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, and I would just urge you to work with the community. We always require a lot of community engagement for any developer and our community has a lot of expertise to share about their neighborhood. And if you say it's going to be easy like design, it will not be.
Oh, you know.
And so, you know, but just appreciate that the community has a lot of expertise to share with you. So I'm glad to see community meetings happening. Could you speak a little bit to density? So why you chose, it sounds like you have factory-built, single-family homes. I know we want as many, I wish we were doing 600 of these homes and not six. So can you speak a little bit to why you chose a single-family home density? I appreciate you're doing the lot split, which I support and it would be great. I'd just like to see as many homes as possible.
Again, we excel, we excel at scattered site infill development and it's something that's not really being done as often. And so these lots, we felt, we originally just proposed one single-family home per lot. There was some interest in additional density. Then we looked at the model with having an accessory dwelling unit similar to the Ramona project, but felt that it would be a little awkward if you have one homeownership and they're a low-income homeowner, now they're also a landlord and, you know, so what we've, and there is AB 1033, which allows for the accessory dwelling unit to be reconveyed separately. However, it's an opt-in and since the city hasn't gotten that far, we felt, well, maybe we can utilize SB 9. And there was actually favorable conditions for us to utilize that because it allows here in the city, which we've been sharing with others, by the way, nonprofits to be able to subdivide without, you know, owner occupancy. And so we said, this is perfect, so let's do this and let's at least get two homes per lot that are homeownership opportunities. We just, these particular lots, once again, 6,000 square feet, you're probably in their zone a certain way. You're not going to get a multifamily project out of that. And even then, you're not going to get the same product. I think people want their home. They want a single family. They're not making enough of them anymore and it's difficult to do. It is expensive. As councilmember Middleton, it is because there's no scalability, right? With the more dense project, you get the additional unit counts, but then you lose the feel of the project and the home and the housing type. So it's becoming a lost development type and we feel it needs to be preserved and this is why we proposed this project.
Do you do duplexes or triplexes or other types of product?
Yes, we do. And as a matter of fact, we have new manufactured duplexes and we have triplex, we do have duplexes that are in manufactured style. But again, we felt like having nice homes were important for this particular neighborhood, having ones that are aesthetically conforming to the historic, you know, homes throughout the community in terms of, again, the mid-century, it's very popular and loved, right? Folks come and visit just to come see these beautiful homes. So we really felt like this would be the best for this particular area and neighborhood and, again, housing type. We're trying to create homeownership opportunities. We want folks to be able to raise families, to have the space to do that.
Thank you. And then could you just, I know there was a thorough explanation and presentation, but just for the community concerned about equity and like generational wealth, could you just speak to that a little bit more?
Yes, absolutely. I think when folks, and this was my issue as well, I didn't understand what the difference was between the community land trusts and let's say just putting, I was used to layering financing that had deed restrictions or covenants that dictated the affordability. But as I mentioned earlier, it wasn't until I started working with municipalities like Palos Verdes, for example, is a real example of a few years ago, we worked with them to go after a developer who sold one of his units, right? He had built multi, it was a condo project. Sold one of the units to his then-girlfriend, who became his wife. She then sold it to, and they were supposed to go to another low-income individual. She ended up selling it to, you know, at market rate and the city then had, it took a year for them to figure it out and then they had to go do all this stuff to try and get it back. And that, they involved me to help them sort of recoup this and then get it to a low-income household the way it was supposed to. And so that was the biggest difference. That was the aha moment for me for a community land trust is that you can't get away with that with a community land trust. You know, you have an entity that's monitoring this all the time. It's a different level of help and communication. You can look at us as adjunct staff, basically, for the city that you're getting for free because we're able to, again, do the stewardship of this land and these homes and may ensure that every transfer goes to who it's supposed to go to. And I think that's the biggest difference. Now to the equity piece, I think the misconception, we do tie this to an AMI index. So again, that is to make it very simple, you know, if the AMI index goes up, that's how much the value goes up. Now, it is limited, you know, that is just what it is. But this is, you know, for a lot of folks, to be able to afford a home at sub $200,000, it's impossible today. So this is an opportunity for folks who normally would never be able to even get their foot in the door. And it's not only the appreciation, though. This is, again, what Dev was speaking to is it's the appreciation plus the, what you've paid down on the mortgage. So the total equity is averaged over the last several years at $100,000 a household. So that, to me, is a substantial amount to, again, get an entry-level home and be able to build some equity, save some money, and then at some point be able to then move on to another type of homeownership.
So essentially, as a policy matter, we're limiting equity for the benefit of being able to ensure that the land can stay affordable forever and perpetuity.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's helpful. And you said the appraisal values are required to use comps that are like stick-built homes and not modular. So there's this sort of whole conversation about, and thank you for saying that, I still remember, like my great-grandmother's mobile home, right? And like the, what that was like versus what I've seen the products are today. So I know we still have a lot of work to do on that. But can you just explain, because there's this whole conversation about like modular or mobile is more like property versus like real property and a real asset that gains value? So could you just speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, so mobile homes are pre-1976. And then after that HUD, you know, the federal government came and said, you know, we got to build to a standard. And so your current manufactured homes, some examples, I even showed you, we sourced before from Capco. Those HUD code homes, again, still not your grandmother's mobile home, but they, they are limited, right, in as far as scope. And they do not have a duty to serve, meaning you cannot get financing and does not, what I mentioned about the appraisal does not apply to those. It's the MH Advantage home, which is this cross-modular, it's a step above this HUD code and under modular. And we say it's only under modular because the difference between modular and this product is modular is typically you build it in panels, right, or in sections, and then you assemble it onsite. Whereas the majority of this project is being built in a factory, that's the biggest difference. So there's limit, you have limitations on customability. So I can customize this to a certain extent. Once I get too far, the factory will say, pick another model, right? We can only do so much moving around because that's going to start increasing costs again. Whereas modular, you can kind of do anything you want to do and then, but again, you're limited in another space where now it's, you're not saving as much money because you're still doing a lot of stuff onsite. So those are the two big differences. The MH Advantage, though, the key to this is the duty to serve, which, again, the GSEs are required, they're requiring this. And so they've put this out where any lender has to lend on these, just like any other home. And they're not chattel. These are, you know, real property. And again, they're fixed to a permanent foundation. You can use different types of foundations as well. We happen to like, our low-profile block wall foundation just gives it a really nice clean look from the street, gives it nice curb appeal. But, you know, that's the big difference there.
Thank you. That's helpful. So it's like real property as opposed to a mobile where it depreciates in value?
Correct.
Thank you. Let me see if I just have a few other questions. Sorry to council for having a lot. The community is used to the self-help model. So the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition has a self-help, a rural self-help program, which is, I believe, funded by USDA. And so there had been a self-help program and then there had been discussion, which they've done in other cities throughout this region. I'm sure you're familiar with that. And so the community members, the buyers provide sweat equity instead of a down payment and then they own the land and the home free and clear. And so I was on the board of Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. I know that that funding went away and we've talked to them. We've had a few years of conversation with them about these lots and asking them to do a self-help program. And I believe because USDA redefined rural and then moved funding, that's just like, sounds to me, staff is nodding their head, like not possible to do self-help here, but they have done it in like desert hot springs and then more different areas. So could you just speak a little bit like to that, since you're an expert in infill development? Like what, because we're looking at your proposal and the community's looking at your proposal.
Are you referring to Pedro's group, by the way?
Yes, yeah. So not about them, but just like, we're looking at your, we have all the potential of development on these lots for what's available, right? And so we're, the community and us are always sure what actually is financeable, which is the real, you know, where the rubber meets the road. So could you just speak a little bit to why this is the best opportunity for development of these infill sites?
Why this is the best opportunity for these infill sites? Because they're there and there's.
Why your, why your model is the best opportunity for us to actually develop these sites?
Oh, because this is actionable. We know exactly what we need to do and how to do it and we have a proven track record of doing it. I don't, I'm sure there's other models that would be great, but I don't see them as being, offering the same long-term affordability as these. I just, I don't.
Right, because those are sellable. Could I ask staff, because I know Jay Verata has worked on that issue and on these sites?
Thank you, councilmember Jay Verata, Director of Community and Economic Development, Director of Housing and Community Development, pardon me. So 2017, we did issue an RFP for these three parcels and there were no respondents. So over time, even last year, we came back to the council and said, we have these three parcels. What would you like to see done with these parcels? And council said homeownership is probably the top priority for use of these parcels. And we also brought up the possibility for sustainability factors and the build. And so I think we're getting a lot of that with this particular product. But for this round of the RFP, CVHC and Habitat for Humanity were well aware of this opportunity. I've called them and let them know the RFP was out. And still, they decided not to respond. And in past years, one of the things they had mentioned, maybe it was because they were unable to leverage the other funds that were once available, is that three lots wasn't enough to cover their project manager costs or just was not the economies of scale to work with just the three lots. So as Jesse said, this is actionable. They're here. They can make this work. So it's a good opportunity for the city.
Thank you, Jay. Yes, I think we had that conversation with CVHC. By the way, I left the board when I was elected in 2017. But they told us that, that they would need a lot more lots and much larger scale in a meeting back then. Are there other lots that we can buy and include in either this project or future phases?
Yes, yes. We're in discussions with the state who has a lot right across the street. They're not willing to donate it to the site, so we're sort of in discussions. That site was, they previously provided a loan to a group home developer. That project did not move forward, so they took the property back and are looking for opportunities like this. We know there are other lots held by private individuals that are interested in making them available for opportunities such as this and other publicly owned lots in the city. We've identified in the past, you know, with these particular lots, there was a slight urgency to sell them and dispose of them because two of them are former redevelopment agency properties, which required being sold off, I think it was five years after redevelopment shutdown. So we've been trying to make that happen.
Thank you. So I know we're just doing questions, but I'm very concerned about gentrification in this neighborhood and other neighborhoods of the city. And I'd love for us to look at buying more lots, even on the private market, to include in future phases, hopefully, of this program. And then just one more question, I think, a preference. So I heard in the presentation, we can decide if there's a preference for people who live and work and live or work in Palm Springs. Obviously, this is only six homes, six, you know, there's going to be a demand list, you know, waiting list of thousands and thousands for these homes. So is there a recommendation about how we might limit that, like to people already living in Palm Springs who might be being priced out? Or have you, does staff have a recommendation for that or maybe the nonprofit?
You know, it's, staff's recommendation would just be communicating with the community now. And I think you're, let me have some thoughts on that.
I was going to say, and Jeff, you'd let me know if I'm incorrect, but I don't know that we can limit it to those who just live here. We're allowed to do preference, but I don't think we can limit it just based on the equal housing.
We could do, sorry, preference for people who currently live here.
Okay, I was just like, I don't know.
Extra outreach for, yep.
Okay.
I might, I might have us think about that, just because I'm really worried about people being pushed out versus bringing in new folks who work here, but also don't currently live here. I mean, we've got to provide both. The problem is we need to do this at such a much, much, much larger scale, in the, you know, 10 times amount or more. So I really appreciate staff's work on this. Thank you to council for allowing me the time to ask my questions.
They've given me a lot of time. So councilmember Garner, you're next.
I mostly have comments because, okay, that's fine, because councilmember Holstich answered, asked most of my questions. I saw her writing notes, so I figured I would defer to her. So I think one of the things that we're seeing with all of this, right, is that there's no perfect project when it comes to housing right now. The cost of construction, the cost of market rate is just insane. It's not only low-income residents, it's people that are well above the median income level that also can't afford homes in the city, in our hometown. So it's really impacting a lot of people. But this really creates this pipeline of homeownership, which I think is really exciting because one of the first things I thought about is, you know, maybe right now I qualify to purchase this home and I'm living in it, but within maybe five years, I have a much better job or my partner has a much better job. Suddenly, I'm paying this very low mortgage and I'm saving so much money so that by the time I sell this house, which I'll so that by the time I sell this house, which I'll acquire equity in the down payment that I have, that what I've paid down already on the home, plus the increased sale value, I will have so much money to buy a market rate home because no one's kicking me out if I make more money. So it's really this great opportunity for people that I think is, is, is really awesome. And I, and I want to just emphasize that for, for everyone that's listening. Because our, our, our lives do change, right? Having stable, beautiful housing, especially in our community, around our families, around our neighbors, can really help to propel us to do more, to get those better jobs, to get those better opportunities. And then when we're leaving our home, we're knowing that, sorry, this is very emotional to me, that we're seeing that somebody else who would not otherwise have that opportunity has it. So we're not able to gain as much equity from the home as we would if it was sold at market rate. But we're knowing that the next person that we're selling it to, their lives are going to be changed forever because they're going to be entering into this opportunity. So I think this is a really powerful model with this community land trust. And I want to see it at various price points, too, because we want to make sure that people at all different income levels are having these opportunities to get housing. And we can do this throughout the city, right? We happen to have these three lots in this neighborhood, but that's not, and, and we, we know that this neighborhood is asking for, for housing. But so is people, so are people all over in the city. And there's, there's people, and there's, there are other opportunities. So I just want to put that out there. But the other thing that I wanted to emphasize about this project is the fire safety protections, the, the way that they're built as well in terms of helping with wind. This is a really windy area of town, so to be able to have materials that are going to make that a little bit more durable is really important. And then the solar, adding solar, again, this is decreasing costs for our residents. So I, I want to see us acquire more lots. I'd love to see us buy homes. There are homes in this neighborhood as well and throughout our city that have been on the market for a long time. Maybe these are, these homes are ripe for us to purchase and then give back to our residents in some way, right? There's a lot of opportunity that we have in terms of thinking of creative ways to serve residents, to provide them with housing that they need. And I do, and I appreciate that you'll be reaching out to the community and speaking with them more about this. But I did want to emphasize that I thought it was nice that you already initially had the breeze blocks in the design. Because one of the things that's really interesting about the neighborhood is the older homes that were built there have those breeze blocks. And it's, I, I love them, I think they're really beautiful. I think the community likes them, but, you know, they'll, they'll tell you. So that's just my kind of initial comments. I do really appreciate Councilmember Holstich asking all of those questions because those are really important. I did want to emphasize, too, that this passes down generationally. If you live in this home, I don't know, 25 years, and then you pass, someone passes away, this goes down to their children, you don't have to qualify again in terms of being low-income, right? So there is that, that generational wealth there, too. And just to remind folks, too, that this is, yes, the ground lease, I know, is not always ideal, but it does help to preserve that affordability, like I said, to allow other us opportunities. And it's not unusual for our city, right? We have tribal land that people buy, have their homes on tribal land, and they also have these 99-year leases. So it's, it's something that we know about here. But this time, it actually will give that affordability to the next generation. I think that's it for now.
Okay, well, thank you to my colleagues for covering most of the questions and comments I had, but I have a couple. So the, I know you, you were talking about the homes are not the mobile homes, but the quality of the construction is something, because we're talking really about people who want to then sell these homes in 25 years, perhaps. Is there, is there a marked difference between if it was built onsite or the same or?
No, I would, I, to be honest with you, I think that the module, the manufactured homes are better than onsite stick-built because of some of the things I mentioned. It's in a controlled environment, so there's no moisture, rain, or anything that's going to fall on the wood. Again, it's put together more tightly. There's less materials that are wasted in this. And because of that, it's sealed, so there's less, you know, air getting in and out of the, of the property. So that's helping with the weatherization. There's the same materials as any other home, so you're using the same type of wood, paint, et cetera. The only thing that we do a little differently is on the exterior cladding. Again, we make sure to use fiber cement because we don't use wood or vinyl because those are combustible materials and, and the fiber cement isn't. And so that's one of the big differences. You'll, don't see fiber cement as often, but it looks like any other siding, you know. I think they're actually much better.
Okay, and where are they?
Fire sprinklers, I mean, the whole nine. You, you've got, you know, really cool spaces as well. We have vaulted ceiling options, we have recessed lighting. You really, when you, when you step inside of these, you will not believe that these are a manufactured home. You would not be able to tell.
Is that something that, but that's all determined before the person buys it?
That is correct.
Or is there any, okay, so there's no custom?
All of them, yeah. We, we will have, obviously, color palettes and different colors that these will be featured in. Depending on how the community outreach goes, I think we did a lot of work, maybe not, but we'll see if there's some changes to some of the model types. We have options, though. Again, we have three different factories that we purchase through. One is Clayton Paris. Their homes are coming 100% zero, net zero, right off, right off the floor with no upgrades. But they lack some of the other features, so we have to build the porches onsite, which we plan to do with these anyway. And it's all electric, so, you know, you wouldn't tie, you didn't have any gas. For some folks, they don't like that. And then we also have Skyline and Silvercrest, who are both under Champion Homes. One of them is in Corona and the other one's in Huruva Valley. So between all of them, we have, I mean, hundreds of different models we can choose from. We try to pick the best models that would accommodate not only the spaces that we're looking at, but also, again, would lend best to the aesthetics we were, we were interested in achieving.
So you said Ucaipa and Corona's where they're manufactured?
Yeah, we have Paris, Corona, and Huruva Valley are some of the manufacturers.
Okay, so, yeah, that's, that's great, that, that's still regional, at least. And the, the team that does the garages and the rest?
So you always need a C, we, we hire typically a GC who works with the C-47 contractor. So C-47 contractor is required to do any of these installations. A general contractor, they cannot do it. They would have to sub it out to a C-47 for the actual installation. These homes are also inspected, by the way, by third-party at, right out the factory. So you don't have your, your other types of inspections from the city that you are even required because they're already getting done, you know, from, from HCD. You know, they come in and they, they have their third-party inspector that approves these as well.
Is that team constructing or are they local or are they somewhere, coming from somewhere?
All of the team that are constructing are local. And then we have the onsite team, I think, is what you're referencing. Those are local as well, yeah. They're all in Riverside and Temeridino.
Okay, okay. And the, the, just about getting the, the mortgage, is that, they're just going to a regular bank to get the mortgage for?
Yeah, we have lenders who understand the community land trust. So we have, again, different models that we've approached. Sometimes the city will not be interested in a community land trust, and they want their money secured. And so we subsidize each buyer, and then they got to do it each time that, that property sells, and it costs more each time that happens, right? So you lose that affordability long-term. But, you know, the community land trust sort of keeps it, you know, keeps it there for-
Right, right. And just, I guess, to staff, so if these are sometimes first-time homebuyers or things, is there any assistance that we give in going through the mortgage process? Or is that just up to them?
So, yeah, the, the mortgage process, they're open. So again, there are specific lenders on this type because it's a community land trust. So there's only certain ones that would probably go and approach this. But these are conventional loans, and they would be required to bring in minimal down payments as well because the equity position is there. So they'll look at the, what the potential value is versus what the actual sales price is. And that, that removes like needs for like MI, like mortgage insurance and things like that. Brings the cost down, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say-
Absolutely. So we, again, we're a HUD-certified counseling agency. So when folks come to us, we try to, the first place they go is education. So we make sure that they're mortgage-ready. If they're not mortgage-ready, we work with them until they are. If they are mortgage-ready, then we go ahead and get them pre-qualified. So our, we have staff, internal staff, that would get them pre-qualified. We don't typically do the first, so these would, these packages would then be sent to the lenders who would like to work on this project with us. And they would go ahead and offer the client whatever there is to offer on, on, on their mortgage.
Okay, great. I mean, most of my questions now are similar to, to, to what, how do we did the local preference out there? How do we make sure we get it out and assistance? And then mainly, how might, do we find more land and properties to do this within our city? Because this model really seems great. And, and what Councilmember Garner was just saying, how it could really lead to people going to market rate or to other, other types of housing within our city. But it'd be great for the residents, and I'd love to see more properties within our city used for this. So thank you for the presentation. And you certainly seem to know what you're talking about, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Very impressive. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Holstich.
I already used up all my speaking time, I just want to comment. I very, I asked just only questions. Thank you so much to staff. It's just truly amazing to see how far we've come, that we really have, you know, invested in staff to deal with affordable housing, to do our own rental assistance. I just think this is an amazing project that we've been working on since 2017 and then well beyond that, but that's as long as I can vouch for, to make something happen here. So I hope this is the very first start, and we have a lot more to go. And I hope you'll come back and we can, perhaps you could work with our staff to look at other land that might be available. We have a revenue stream and funding in our housing fund. And so we, you hear that we have a very pro-housing council, and we want to develop as much affordable housing, workforce housing, market rate, affordable market rate housing, attainable housing, and all of that in the city of Palm Springs. So thank you to our staff and your departments for leading the way. And thank you for proposing this project for us, we're very grateful.
Thank you, okay. Oh, we have, there's a motion, a second. Motion passes, four and one absent. Thank you very much for the great presentation and for all the work you're doing and all the work you're going to do to staff as well as the presenters and, and who was on Zoom as well. So we appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. The first speaker is Julia Morton, followed by Dominic Moonheart.
Good evening. I am here to encourage the adoption of a bylaw in Palm Springs, similar to the one on the books in the city of San Jose, which streamlines council actions and focuses deliberations on issues that mostly directly impact the local community. The policy adopted by San Jose serves as a model for enhancing the efficiency and effectiveness of city government. By restricting council actions, by restricting council actions to matters that have direct and substantial influence on the local community, San Jose ensures that it's a, that its resource, time, and energy are dedicated to addressing the most pressing issues that affect its citizens. This approach allows for more focused, responsive, responsive and accountable local government. By narrowing the scope of matters the council engages with, Palm Springs can better allocate resources and avoid being sidetracked by issues which the city has little, if any, influence over. Furthermore, this policy would emphasize the importance of civic engagement and value of public time. By ensuring that council deliberations are reserved for matters of immediate local concern, the city would honor the commitment and involvement of community members who expect their elected representatives to focus on issues that have tangible and direct impacts on their daily lives. This will allow more time and attention dedicated to local problems, not ones that are thousands of miles away. Additionally, the policy's guidelines would help ensure that the council's actions are aligned with the principles of democracy and human dignity. Resolutions should and must uphold the values of inclusivity and respect, avoiding any stance that dehumanizes or belittles parts of the wider community. This commitment to ethical governance would strengthen community cohesion and would promote a positive social environment. Adopting a similar bylaw in Palm Springs will also prevent the council from being entangled in matters far beyond its jurisdiction, such as a foreign policy or state actions that do not directly affect our city. This clear delineation of responsibilities will prevent unnecessary political embarrassments.
Your time, your time is up, thank you.
Ma'am, your time is up.
The next speaker is Dominic Moonheart, followed by Abraham Ishak.
I am ready, all right. Hello, thank you very much for having me here. So I just wanted to address item 3A. You guys already made the decision, but I think it was a great decision. I think Grace Garner would be good as an alternate for the RCTC. So, yeah, yeah, so I wanted to address that. But I also wanted to bring up Public Works Matter because when I'm in downtown Palm Springs for, for hockey or baseball games, when I go watch them at the casino, some of the crosswalks, the new crosswalks have this feature where you push the button, for the blind people. You push the button and it'll tell you what street you're in, like, traveling north Palm Canyon and Museum Way, traveling east, something like that. Majority of those things don't work on majority of the lights. Some of the lights in the downtown area, some of them do work, some of them don't work. I'm a little bit blind, I have these glasses on, and sometimes it's blurry with all these bright lights. Sometimes it just messes with my vision, and so I usually press, and it's nice to have that. But for the people who can't see at all, that's what I'm really concerned. You know, I'm a little bit blind, I can see. For the people who have a stick, we can't see. That needs to be addressed. So I just wanted to address those three, two things. Congratulations, Councilmember Garner, on your RCTC alternate position, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Abraham Ishak, followed by Dr. Jesse Nima Romero.
I'm here to discuss the role of our local government in foreign affairs, specifically regarding a resolution related to the ongoing genocide Israel is committing. On October 12th, Palm Springs officially declared its steadfast support for Israel. Since then, Israel has dramatically escalated its US-backed genocide, resulting in significant loss of life. Despite this complex and evolving situation, this council has chosen not to issue a follow-up resolution calling for a ceasefire, though they have already set themselves a precedent for doing so. These decisions have highlighted a fundamental question. Should the city be inserting itself in foreign affairs and taking sides in international matters? Foreign affairs are intricate and complex, requiring nuanced understanding. Local officials, including all of you, lack the capacity to engage effectively in these matters. Your unnecessary involvement has led to unintended consequences, as evidenced by the fact that resolution has placed you in a challenging position, unable to respond adequately, if at all, to an ever-evolving crisis that could have been predicated in, predicted in October. This experience clearly demonstrates the slippery slope of engaging in international politics. By passing the initial resolution, you have set a precedent that demands follow-up and consistency, drawing the council further into a realm that is far beyond your jurisdiction and expertise. If we had a bylaw prohibiting commentary on foreign affairs, this entire situation could have been avoided. You could have passed a simple resolution denouncing antisemitism, Islamophobia, terrorism, and murder, but you did not. A bylaw like the one you, we are advocating for would provide clear guidance, ensuring that your work is focused on local matters where you can have an actual impact rather than taking actions that amount to posturing for the sake of party politics and higher office. Last week, I informed the public of the October 12 resolution at the One PSP monthly meeting. Many people approached me afterwards and asked if the council had taken a side. I responded that it had. It's unfortunate, by the time I spoke, the mayor had already left the meeting and didn't have the opportunity.
Next speaker is Dr. Jesse Nima Romero, followed by Laura Otisson.
So the last time that Abraham and I were here, we told the council about the mayor's feeble, faulty, and foolish reasoning for passing the October 12 resolution. This week, we focus on the District 5 council member. We met with Ms. Middleton on February 5th, and just like we did with the mayor, we asked her about her motivations for passing the resolution. Again, we were informed that there was a public outcry that demanded the city to take action. action. Well, let's go back to the receipts. According to the public records request, before October 12th, Councilmember Middleton received only one email on October 8th from Iris Smotrich, former Rancho Mirage Mayor and Councilmember. The email was forwarded, was a forwarded messages, message with a note by Ms. Smotrich that borders on the unhinged. However, no matter how emotionally charged that email was, one message from a former official from another valley city does not a public outcry make, especially if that council, if that community member isn't even from Palm Springs. As our conversation with the council member continued, she stressed that the resolution was merely reiterating US foreign policy, and we asked the question, if it's merely reiterating a federal policy, shouldn't the federal government take that on? Why bother at all with it? The reply was that the city has taken positions on issues in the past like Prop 8 in 2008. We pointed out that we don't have a problem with domestic, state, and local issues being addressed by the city, but surely a local government in the middle of the California desert has little if any ability to influence federal foreign policy. Shouldn't the city just focus on what it can actually do in its own sphere of influence? However, as we witnessed in these chambers two weeks ago, Councilmember Middleton kept talking in circles and conflating foreign policy with domestic policy, and seemingly cannot make a distinction between the two. Here's the conclusion that we have come to based on our meeting with Ms. Middleton or observations here. If council members cannot distinguish between domestic and foreign policy, how can they possibly wade through, understand, and fully comprehend international issues that are complicated, complex, and convoluted and far outside the jurisdiction of what they were elected to do?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Otisson, followed by Zachary Flores.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Laura Otisson. I'm the owner of Elite Otters and Palm Springs Master Swim Teams. We've been under contract for use of the swim center since 2019. I'm here tonight because I sent an email to you all on Monday regarding concerns with the apparent conflict of interest with the pool manager, Kaylee Passat. In my email, I explained how this conflict of interest adversely affects both my existing contract and my contract renewal. I ask for your help to address these issues before any additional harm was rendered. In evidence of my concern, less than 72 hours after bringing this matter to you, today I received an unsolicited amendment to my existing contract, significantly reducing my contract entitlements. Furthermore, pool management has directed me to sign this amendment by May 28th. In any other place, this would be considered a whistleblower issue. It appears this amendment is retaliation for bringing this conflict of interest to the attention of the city council. In addition, the general public will also be extremely unhappy. The pool's management has decided that every Tuesday and Thursday morning, from approximately 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, they will reduce the number of available swim lanes from 23 lanes to four lanes for the general public. This is a significant reduction in pool access during the hottest time of the year. As executed, this amendment provides a benefit to both the aquatics director in her capacity as board chair of the Palm Desert Swim Club and to the Palm Desert Swim Club by way of their board chair's employment with the city of Palm Springs. Furthermore, this unsolicited amendment is in direct violation of the city's conflict of interest rules and employee labor agreements. It places the responsibility for moving the lane lines on my team. It directs us to complete city services by performing the work of existing city employees. I implore the city council to investigate this conflict of interest and direct the city staff to manage my existing contract in good faith.
Thank you. Next speaker is Zachary Flores, followed by Brad Anderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I stand before you to express my firm belief that our local government should not involve itself in foreign affairs. While international matters are important, they lie beyond the scope of this council's jurisdiction and expertise, and engaging in them can take away attention and resources from the issues that most directly impact Palm Springs. The primary responsibility of a local government is to address the needs and concerns of its stakeholders and constituents. Resources like time are limited, and it is imperative that we use them efficiently to solve local problems. By taking time to focus on foreign policy, we lose time to discuss issues such as public safety, infrastructure, and economic development. These are the areas where your actions have the most direct and significant impact. Foreign affairs are complex and often require a deep understanding of international relations, diplomacy, and geopolitics. These are best handled by federal agencies and officials who have the expertise and authority to deal with them. Local government lacks the necessary resources and knowledge to make informed decisions on international issues. I think it is obvious that none of you are an expert when it comes to foreign policy. Additionally, engaging in conversations about international affairs can polarize the community. These issues can be highly divisive. This council should focus on fostering harmony and unity, not conflict. A bylaw that prohibits foreign policy-based resolutions can assist this council in avoiding tensions and ensure that this remains a space for constructive dialogue and collaboration. It is also important that you all respect the boundaries of your authority. Both the federal and state constitutions assign specific roles and responsibilities for different levels of government. By overstepping your jurisdiction, you not only risk challenge, but also erode the confidence that Palm Springs places in you to manage local affairs. While foreign affairs are significant, they fall outside your purview. The council's focus should focus on addressing the needs of this community by adopting a commenced bylaw that clearly defines the council's scope. You will honor your own responsibility towards Palm Springs and ensure that your leadership is effective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Brad Anderson.
Hi, Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Rancho Mirage. I'll take a couple minutes of your time today on two items. One, I was late to the meeting this evening, but I noticed that you had a presentation from Left to Rise, and you had public speakers for that. I think that's a step in the right position, right area of allowing the public more transparent, not transparency, but participation when the items come in front of them. They could comment on the presentation that they heard, so that's great. And my second statement, I guess, is I became aware that the Riverside County animal shelters are having a free adoption event this Saturday from 10:00 AM in the morning to 10:00 PM in the evening, except for Blythe. And they're gonna, like I said, it's free, and they're gonna waive any reduction fees or if your dog was kidnapped or in the pound's care, that all those fees will be waived if you happen to have an animal that was abducted by them. So, I think that's a great, a great thing, and I believe I heard that Palm Springs was having an event too. Maybe if anybody knows about it, they can comment on that too, because I don't want to take the limelight away from Palm Springs, but if you want to adopt an animal, this is an awesome weekend to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We had a speaker online. Are they there? No? Is there any other public comment?
No further commenters.
Okay. The next item is City Council and City Manager request for upcoming agenda development. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just going over future agenda, meeting schedules very quickly. At the next meeting, we anticipate the representative from the Palm Springs Aerial Tramway Commission coming to give us a brief update on their work. We get lots of questions about the status of our bridges and where they're at, so we wanted to come and just a very brief update on the status of where we are in the various bridges and funding and design and that sort of stuff. Just sort of a general overview for the public, so they get a little update. We do have the South Palm Canyon Bridge, Oswood Land Trust work that's been done by our engineering department coming forward. The city attorney has been working on an updated Picasso ordinance that you've asked to bring back, and we'll be talking about that, bringing that to you along with the Public Arts Commission ordinance update that we talked about earlier. And then we'll be bringing forward the first update on the continuation budget for fiscal year 25. You'll see on June 17th, we do have our special joint meeting with all the boards and commissions, and that will be at the convention center. And on the last meeting in June, a regular meeting, we'll have a Parks Master Plan update, adoption of our continuation budget for the second year of our two-year budget. And then we do have a Serena Park Development Agreement update that we anticipate having ready to bring forward for your consideration. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any comments or council? Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. I'd like to request the endorsement of the Lift to Rise 2024-2026 Action Plan, so if staff could add that to an upcoming agenda when it fits in. I think I have to ask for a second and a third.
We have agreement.
Thank you.
Yes.
And then I have another request. I've followed some of the, what's been happening with the commissions in the newspaper. I think I raised and requested Code of Conduct apply. Thank you to council for considering that Code of Conduct apply to commissioners, but I remain extremely concerned that we have commissioners who potentially have violated the Brown Act and also might just need some help from staff about their role, their scope, their jurisdiction, and the work to do. And I really appreciated the council's conversation about kind of rethinking the role of some of the commissions who just might be outdated. We set these commissions 30 or 40 years ago, some of them longer, and I think that there is local work to do, and we need their help doing it, but I think that there's a mismatch. So, one, because, and I'll just share, you know, in particular, the Human Rights Commission, because that is the commission that is in the news about violating the Brown Act potentially. I'm not sure what has exactly occurred. I know, you know, the news and others are looking into that, but the Human Rights Commission I served on with Mayor Pro Tem in 2016, we served on that, and at the time, the Human Rights Commission's role was to, we would provide, show documentaries on subjects like homelessness and public safety that were relevant in Palm Springs. As I mentioned before, it really was created in the 80s and 90s as a human relations commission. I just think that there's a lot more work to do to understand the role of the Human Rights Commission. I've said publicly many times, I ran for council because I was serving on the Human Rights Commission, and it was impossible or very difficult to get any work done because of the lack of clarity around the role for the commission. So, for those reasons, I'd like to, as we, I know we're overall looking at all of our commissions, but because of the concern about the Brown Act and the fact that this commission is still meeting and we still have people who might have violated the Brown Act intentionally or not on that commission, I'd like to ask for a hiatus of that commission and further work until we can do a session with the Human Rights Commission and City Council to provide policy direction to that commission and also ask for staff recommendation prior to that meeting on an update to the Human Rights Commission. So, what should be the proper role and scope of the commission? Should it remain a human relations commission? Should it be a social justice commission? This council has done work on those issues, and I think we've talked about forming other task forces, and perhaps we can just roll that into the Human Rights Commission. So, for that reason, I'd like to make that request, to really consider like a rebrand and rethinking of that commission so that it's more workable, it's aligned with the council's policy, and it's more aligned with staff knowing how to, you know, work with that commission and work on human rights issues in the city that we so, so much care about. I heard a second and a third, so if staff could bring that to an upcoming council meeting, it's up to staff in terms of your workload, but hiatus, I'm concerned about them bringing up new issues and bringing new work without really doing that work with council to set policy and priorities, which is what we do as a council. Does that work for staff, or do you need further direction?
Councilmember, yes, I think we can bring something back to first meeting in June. We'll work towards that. Obviously, we need to get guidance from the council member on the role of the commissions themselves. They're advisors to the city council, and so your input is going to be critically important to us, but we will work on, and we are working on those roles and responsibilities that you had brought forward earlier.
Thank you. So, staff could bring a recommendation first about rethinking and rebranding and really setting that scope, role, and responsibility and workload, and then we can move forward on considering that, making changes, and then moving forward and having the Human Rights Commission meet and, you know, restart with that rebrand.
I think so, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holstich, you finished? Yeah, Councilmember Garner.
Thank you. Since we did talk about future land opportunities, I would love to get support to have staff bring back an item that's about purchasing lots or purchasing even homes that could be acquired by the city in order to provide other homeownership opportunities. Be really curious to hear what the team thinks would be the best course of action, and then beyond that, how that process could be moved forward, especially with acquiring land. My concern is maybe there's some great opportunities to acquire land, but if it doesn't come to us, if it comes to us too late, then we don't really get that opportunity. So, there might be a need for council to give direction on what staff is allowed to move forward with. But if there's support, I would be interested in exploring those opportunities.
Yes.
Okay. Is that?
Yes, there's three S's. Anything, anything else? Councilmember Garner? Is that it? Yeah, okay. So, I just have some personal, some announcements. First of all, on a personal note, I really want to thank our police and fire and Public Works for their actions on Friday night. For those of you who don't know, a driver under the influence first tried to drive into the Marilyn statue, drove down, reversed museum way, down the alley next to where my store is, back, smashed the back of my store fence and drove completely through the store next door to me into a bike rack and then a parked car and down the street. And our police apprehended him very quickly and were there within minutes with our fire and Public Works, helping to clean up, helping to secure the area. Public Works made sure the building was secure. We were extremely fortunate that nobody was hurt. Had this been the night before in a Village Fest or a couple hours, it could have been a really disastrous situation, but thanks especially to the police and fire and Public Works and all of our city staff on this. It was quite, quite a terrible scene, and unfortunately, that night, the police were nearby because there was a hit and run nearby, and there was a DUI going on, so this goes back to our, our need for real traffic safety and whether it's speeding or driving under the influence in our city. On a positive note, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem DeHart, who's being recognized tonight with the Harvey Milk Community Leader Award in San Diego. My fellow councilmembers and I attended the Ronald M. Allen Learning Center groundbreaking at the Air Museum, which is an exciting new project, helping to give our youth learning opportunities in aviation, as well as great expansion for one of our key assets in our city, the Air Museum. I was also happy this week to welcome the California Police Chiefs Convention, as well as the Solid Waste Association of North America to Palm Springs. Some upcoming, also Councilmember Garner and I were at the grand opening of the Twin Palms Little Free Library, which is really wonderful, built by this College of the Desert students, and hopefully we start seeing those throughout our city. If you haven't seen it, it's a beautiful little mid-century free library on the street. On Monday, we do have the Memorial Day Flower Drop at the Palm Springs Air Museum, along with the whole Memorial Day celebration and remembrance on June 11. On June 1, we have our firefighter's, firefighter foundation fish fry at Ruth Hardy Park. That is for $10. Great meal, our firefighters are there, it's a great way to come out, support them, and be part of the community. On June 4, at the convention center at 5:30, is Airport Master Plan Public Community Meeting, which I would encourage all to go. Hopefully, it's the first of many. And those are all the events I have coming up. Oh, one more, councilmember Hostage?
Thank you. I have one more if I can. So Palm Springs PD's Lieutenant Gus Ariza is being honored with a Special Achievement Award at a Memorial Day Awards Luncheon with AMVETS, Post 66, and Veterans for Peace. So they're having their 18th Annual Memorial Day Awards Luncheon in Cathedral City. I believe there are still tickets available. Thank you to the police chief for nominating him. I was also proud to nominate him as well and sponsor, I think, two full tables we're doing of the, of his colleagues and coworkers. So I would just encourage the public, if you'd like to support him, for all of his amazing work, especially as the liaison and manager for the police department's LGBTQ Outreach Committee. I know the lieutenant is well-loved in the community and well-respected among his peers, and so we're so grateful for him, for his work, and just really proud of him for receiving this much-deserved award. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I did of that. Okay, anything else? All right, the next regular city council meeting will be held on Thursday, June 13, 2024, at 5:30 PM. This meeting is adjourned at 9:37.